Great.
Welcome, everyone, to the JPNL meeting. We have two items on the agenda. First item, I'm going to let Rebecca introduce it. I didn't take it away, Rebecca.
Yes, we had an opening and a committee. I apologize, my minutes were open.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, maybe I should have put this over to you. Sorry, forgive me about that. But go ahead.
No, it would be, it would be me for this one. Yep, we had a vacancy come up in the committee and see here. Applications were reviewed by both the committee liaison and the committee chair. And the following individuals coming forth to you this evening, which is Lindsay McGuire, to fulfill the Park and Open Space Committee vacancy. So the request, request from the Parks and Open Spaces Committee tonight is for a recommendation for Lindsay McGuire to be put forth to the board for approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from committee members?
Yep, so Rebecca, who stepped off? Who, from the board?
Is that covered in the memo? I forget off the top of my head, Arthur, my apologies. I'm working on three different vacancies right now.
No, that's all right. It's not a big deal. If you do find out, if you could just shoot me an email, that'd be great.
I'd be happy to do that after the meeting.
Okay. No further questions for me.
Any other questions from committee members? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve. I'm trying to get the, the agenda back up in front of me, so I might not be the best one, but is it McGuire?
Make the motion if you need me to.
I, I moved to, to approve the application of Lindsay McGuire to the Parks and Open Spaces Committee.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Now moving on to item two. Again, Rebecca, if you'd like to introduce this or whomever is the proper staff member.
I would be happy to. So tonight, we're, the JPNL Committee is requested to provide a recommendation on the operator's license for Michael Lind. I realize that this is, is not something typical that the JPNL Committee and the Village Board typically hears. So one of the things that I think would be helpful tonight, after I get you started, is to have our attorney Nathan Baer just outline the process. November 29th, Michael Lind applied for an operator's license. And in accordance with our ordinance, section 335-3, the village conducted a background check on the applicant and the police department has recommended that the application be denied. Notice of the recommendation for denial was emailed to the applicant and made mailed via postal mail on December 9. For your discussion this evening and that Attorney Baer will review with you, are the Wisconsin State statutes regarding the license and permit related to alcohol beverages. These were also highlighted within your meeting memo for this evening.
Okay.
Attorney Baer.
Thank you. So the, when we're talking about an operator's license, what we're really talking about is a license to act essentially as a bartender somewhere within the confines of the village of Shorewood. So most of the criteria for obtaining a license are pretty straightforward and they're defined by state statute. They're all under chapter 125 of the Wisconsin statutes. Most of them are pretty much easy to figure out whether the person qualifies. For example, they have to be 18 years old. They have to have successfully completed and approved responsible beverage service training course. And, you know, so most of them are, you check the box, whether they did it or not, it's pretty straightforward. But there's one particular requirement that's listed in chapter 125 and I'll read you what the statute says and then I'll try to explain a little bit about it. On qualifications for licenses under 125045B, the, the subheading is titled criminal offenders. And this is, this is what the state statute says. It says, no license or permit related to alcohol beverages may, subject to, and then it lists a number of references to Wisconsin's Fair Employment Act, be issued under this chapter to any person who has habitually been a law offender or has been convicted of felony unless the person has been duly pardoned. And so here's where it gets a little, a little complicated. The Wisconsin Fair Employment Act says that you cannot discriminate against someone in either employment or issuance of a license simply because the individual has a criminal past or a criminal history. And for example, yeah, the best example I could think of is someone applies to be a chauffeur and they have five prior convictions for operating while intoxicated. Well, in that particular case, you could say that's a risk that specifically relates to the job tasks of being a chauffeur and we, you could duly decide not to hire somebody because of that reason. Or you could duly decide, you know, not to issue a license for that person to, you know, do chauffeur-related activities as a result of that. And I'll change the scenario and give you another example. Let's say that the person is applying for a license or applying for a job and to be a chauffeur and the particular conviction that they received was for hunting. I don't know, I'm going to make up something completely unrelated. Hunting out of season and they got criminally prosecuted based upon some state statute or DNR rule. Well, that would not be a proper basis to say, I'm going to refuse to hire this person for the chauffeur job because of their criminal, their criminal history. Now, the, when it comes to 12504-sub5, this, this criminal or habitual criminal designation, there's not a whole lot of case law that interprets that or telling us exactly what they meant in the statute. So there are a number of decision, or there's a number of league opinions that have been issued. And they're all generally, they all generally agree on some common, common things. If there are offenses that are related to alcohol, those can be considered because it does, that would not violate the Fair Employment Act. And if there are a number of, of items, if there was a felony that related to an alcohol offense, or if the offense in some way involved alcohol, that would also be related. But they also would, they also generally agree that if a person has one felony and is totally and completely unrelated to alcohol in any way, shape or form, that, that, that would not necessarily preclude the individual from obtaining an operator's license. So the, the, there, there's not a lot of guidance in the statute. It doesn't specifically define what it means to be a habitual offender, but it's generally agreed upon that, you know, if you have one, if one felony related to alcohol, that would be enough. And if you have a number of offenses related to alcohol, that might be recognized as, as a habitual offender. The other thing that is generally agreed upon is that all of the offenses don't necessarily have to be criminal in nature. If a person has four or five, you know, OWIs, but they were spread out long enough, you know, so that they only qualified as a first offense each time, that might be enough. If you have a number of disorderly conduct, municipal ordinance violations and each one of them related to alcohol, that might be enough. So this is where it gets into a little bit of, of some, some, some discretion and a little bit of a gray area as to what is meant by habitual offender. So my understanding is, and I'll turn it over to the police department and our acting chief to discuss. What, what happens is under the local ordinance, they're required to do a background check. And if they find items that might raise a red flag under this particular statute that talks about habitual offenders, they, their duty bound to bring it to the full board and pursue it to the ordinance and say, this is what we found. And here you, you can make a decision based upon this information. So that, that's really where we are. It's really, it's really a determination as to whether or not it meets that definition of habitual offender based upon what the police department has found. And I will turn it over to the acting chief, Leventhal, to address, address that.
And before we do that, I would just like to ask everyone to mute their mics. I'm looking, there are about seven people who have their mics unmuted. So please only unmute your mic when you need to speak. Otherwise, there's some cook offense background. That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, you ready for my part? Okay, all right. So in general, when license application of this type comes through, I will receive information from the customer service department at Village Hall that there's been an applicant who's submitted for a license. And part of my review of that is the criminal history document that comes through with the application. And in reviewing the criminal history document for Mr. Lind, there were several things that I identified that were concerned enough that I believe that they would fall under the habitual offender category. And also with, there is a felony offense that I did find out subsequently here today, this morning. I did find out that that has an underlying operating while intoxicated arrest that was involved with that. So it was a fleeing from a operating while intoxicated stop. It was the first offense arrest that did take place. So, you know, we, we do check through the, the criminal history to see if there's anything that would expressly prohibit the license. And in this particular case, there's things I, I thought were enough of a concern. I should bring it to the full board for their attention.
I, I have a question for you. When you said that there was another offense that you discovered today, can you let us know when that was? Because what I'm seeing is that, and maybe I'm not looking at this correctly, but it looks like the criminal history is, you know, 10 plus years ago with nothing since. So if you could just clarify that, please.
Yeah, the operator intoxicated arrest took place with the fleeing or eluding an officer arrest from Price County. And the conviction date on that was May 28th of 2002.
Okay.
I have a question for the attorney and or acting chief. It's regarding, this seems to be this process that we're undergoing right now for operating. This is nothing to do with opening a tavern or bar or even being granted a liquor license. I haven't seen this in any neighboring municipalities. Is this unique or is, I'm just wondering. It seems quite unstandard, if that's a word.
Chief, I don't know if, if you want to address that or do you want me to address that?
If you can address it.
Sure, I, I, no, I mean, I, I, I think for, you know, many municipalities, they have, they ask the, the department to, to take a look at it and review it to see if there's any, anything that, because otherwise you, you wouldn't necessarily know. And, and this is, I mean, 12504-sub5 is, is part of the state statute. So I think it's pretty, pretty standard. You know, I, but again, I, I think that the question really becomes for you to decide whether it constitutes habitual offender status based upon, you know, as you had mentioned, the age of some of these offenses or, you know, you know, you, you may or may not find that it qualifies. So the, but the other thing is, again, the, the, the state legislature, though, of course, did reference the Fair Employment Act in the statute. So there's always the issue of whether or not it's related to an alcohol, alcohol or not. You know, the case law talks about whether or not there was something that related to the charge that, you know, was, was there an impaired judgment as a result of alcohol or there are other drugs? Was there an element related to controlled substances or substance analogues? Or was there a violation of laws relating to alcohol or what, chapter 125? So, you know, so those are all, those are all factors for you to consider.
Arthur and Melissa have their hands up, Tammy.
Okay, I'm go ahead, Arthur.
So I see. I see Mr. Seidner on the line here. I would love to maybe get his, the owner, one of the owners of Butterment. I just would love to get his opinion on, on the situation and to see if he, you know, how he feels after reading through the, the packet here and if he feels comfortable with still, you know, having Mr. Lind work for Butterment.
Hi, Dan Seidner here from Black Shoe Hospitality, including our new child Butterment. So I was informed of this situation on Friday and took the time to speak with Mike immediately. Asked him about it. He was very forthcoming in what had transpired in his life what is now several years ago. And I did not, we do not do criminal background checks when we're in the hiring process, but we do check references. And I had the opportunity from three different industry people to comment on Mike, Mike's work experience, his, his abilities, and all of them were sterling. He has been employed for a dozen years at Ward's House of Prime downtown. And, you know, I've only known Mike about a month now, but he's certainly been everything that was described to me. He's professional, personable, on time. And I don't object to this process. I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. I agree in support with the, you know, taking the time to do background checks and, and red flags come up. But I am here tonight and will be happy to, we're planning on sitting in on the general meeting to give my support of Mike. And just note the fact that I, I have a hard time connecting habitual status to someone who's had no criminal record since, I believe, 2008 or thereabout. And has a reputation in the hospitality industry as being a professional. And everything I've experienced over the last month has supported that. So that's basically where I'm at. Hey, questions I can answer?
Not for me. I, I appreciate that you're here to speak on, you know, on behalf of Mr. Lind. And it looks like Mr. Lind is here as well. So, you know, I commend you for being here and thank you for, you know, being, being gracious with us and what probably feels like, you know, kind of intrusive on your, your past and something that's personal to you. And, you know, I, I'm glad to hear that that Mr. Seidner is supportive of this. And, you know, I, I appreciate the work that that interim chief Leventhal has done. And, you know, I, I understand why we want to have safeguards in place for, you know, things like this. But it, to me, in this situation, you know, I see what looks to me like somebody who made some mistakes in the past and has gotten their life together and, you know, paid their debt to society. And I, I would hate to see somebody have something that happened years ago and for which they have already made all the amends that were asked of them, you know, to have that keep them from, from living their life fully now. And I, I feel a little, you know, uncomfortable even kind of like debating this publicly. And again, I, I know this is the process and I, I understand why it's an important one and I, I get that. But, um, you know, it just, it feels a little icky to me to be having this, this conversation in public. And, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I definitely, from what I've, what I've seen and what I've heard, you know, will be, will be supportive of granting the operator's license to Mr. Lind.
Thank you, Melissa. I'd also like to say that from what I've heard, this gentleman holds an operator's license in one, if not other municipalities. It, it was mentioned Ward's House at stake, which is downtown Milwaukee and potentially other places. So I'm not sure why in Shorewood, we would be more onerous and scrutinize someone's past that occurred well over a decade ago from someone who is currently employed and who is seeking, you know, employment in our, in our municipality. So I can understand that this is a safeguard that's put in place. But again, I do, as well as Melissa mentioned, I do find this very uncomfortable and a little intrusive and, but I guess it's on the books and maybe that's something that we look at. If, whether it's state statute, that's one thing. If it's a local ordinance, something that we could perhaps look at making this a lot less of an a public process. So anyway, I'm trying to find out here if there are any other board members. It looks like President McCag has, McCollum McCag has her hand up as well. Anne?
Yes. Sorry, I actually think there was a gentleman, Mr. Hartman, had his hand up before me.
Okay, I was going with, I was going with board members here at this point.
Okay, that makes sense.
We have a limited amount of time and a limited amount of patience for bringing what I consider personnel matters into the public. But go ahead.
Right. I just figured there's a question that I was going to ask at the full board anyway, and since we are asking questions. Mr. Lind, if you could just explain, on the application, there's a box that asks where the person has a felony conviction, I believe. And you should check no. And I was just wondering if you'd like to explain why you answered that way.
What I read was it didn't ask about a felony. It asked about like, well, I, I thought it did ask about a felony. And I thought that was obscured off my record. I thought it was, I don't, it was no longer on my record. That's what I believed from my lawyer back in 2002. So I didn't think it was on my record anymore.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, I guess the, any other board members before I, I do have an individual, Michael Hartman. I would ask that you keep your comments and questions short and relevant to the situation and, and you will be cut off if you stray.
Well, that's so fine. You know, I, I'm not sure if the process even allows for comments. So I, if it does, I'd sure like to make one in support of Mike if that's doable.
That is perfectly acceptable.
Okay, totally briefly, you know, I've known Mike for about 12 years, I think, mostly through wards where he's worked and I've found him to be of upstanding character. He has a warmth of spirit for the job and a depth of knowledge about the job and human nature. And I think he's helped Brian Ward build a little bit of a community there surrounding the restaurant and as part of the restaurant. And I'd sure like to go to the, the new place and be part of whatever community he might be able to help the owners build there as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time that wishes to speak on the matter? In, in my nine years of serving on the village board, I have never been part of one of these types of hearings. So forgive me as well for my clumsiness in this matter. So I'm going to return this back to village manager Ewald to allow or let us know what next steps are as far as committee is concerned. I do see that there is a recommended motion, but I'm not sure if that's for committee or for full board.
It is for committee, requesting that the committee provide a recommendation to the village board.
Okay, I will ask if either of the other committee members wish to make a motion. If not, I will go ahead and do so.
Make a motion.
Okay.
All right. I move to recommend the operator's license for Michael Lind.
Second.
I will be voting yes. So, okay, any further discussion? All right. And remember this will go to full board, but all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? It's 3-0. This will move to full board with a recommendation, unanimous recommendation of the JPNL Committee. It will be on full board this evening. Thank you. And then we just have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, could I just talk process? So what I'll do was when we get to this matter on the full board, I will recap that what was covered in committee and that you had a unanimous vote to, to approve the license. And then ask if any of the other board members need to ask any questions. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Oh, well, I'm assuming you guys, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Meeting adjourned. Thanks. See you guys soon.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, everyone, and welcome this evening. Thank you for being here and thank you for your time, talent, service and patience in advance. We will be moving on to item number four, special order of business. For A, consider, please, actually, could I make a motion to take 4B first? I'd like to make a motion to take 4B. Before 4.
Suspending.
Suspending, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor of taking 4B before 4A? Show of hands or voice.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right. Thank you. Motion carries. So we will be taking 4B. Consider operator's license for Michael Lind. Um, this matter was just taken up at the JPNL Committee and it is coming to us with a recommendation to approve the operator's license. It was a unanimous vote, 3-0. During that committee meeting, we heard from acting chief Leventhal as well as Dan Seidner and Mr. Lind himself. And so I just wanted you all to know that that was taken care of, or it's coming to us with that recommendation. So perhaps it would be good for just the trustees that were not present at that committee meeting. Manager Ewald, if you could introduce why this is before us this evening.
Happy to. An operator's license was applied for and at the end of November, I believe, November 29th by Michael Lind. In accordance with that, a, a background check was conducted by the police department, which is a part procedure and protocol. We also reviewed ordinance on 535, pardon me, 335, which is a part of our code, which requires that review and the police department then to provide their input to the JPNL Committee. And Attorney Baer is also here to, to walk you through any components of the Wisconsin State statute as it relates to liquor licensing, should the board choose.
So, um, again, this is a little redundant and I feel uncomfortable because I don't want to belabor this issue as it is coming to us with 3-0 vote, but I do want to be, do our due diligence and, and due process. So acting chief Leventhal, can you just let us know what, why you felt duty bound to refer this to the village board for review?
Certainly, certainly. Under Wisconsin statute 125.04-sub5-subB, that deals with criminal offenders in terms of alcohol licensing for, or licensing for alcohol beverages. In there, it says that no license or permit related to alcohol beverages be subject to state statutes 111.321, 111.322, and 111.335, be issued under this chapter to any person who has habitually been a law offender or has been convicted of a felony unless the person has been duly pardoned. In the course of looking at the criminal history information that was attached with the background check associated with the license application for Mr. Lind, I, I identified several criminal offenses that have an alcohol-related nexus, one of which was a fleeing from operator license, fleeing from an operator charges as a felony, which subsequently found out that it was related to an OWI first offense as well in addition to the felony. There's also multiple OWI-related convictions, three total. And then also municipal violation for seller or give intoxicants to a minor from back in 2006. And then there was one charge in particular that caught my attention for DC while armed from the city of Milwaukee. They had a sentence for probation with it, but in there, there were several conditions of probation that were ordered with the sentence, one of which was absolute sobriety, another was random urine screens, and another was no contact with taverns. The totality of all that combined made me feel that it could fall under the habitual offender category. in addition to the, the convicted felony with a possible, um, alcohol-related nexus. I felt that it was my duty to bring it to attention to the board for you to, um, examine and decide whether or not you wanna, uh, issue the permit.
Thank you, Acting Chief Leventhal. Um, and, uh, the discussion in the committee did, um, observe that there, all of these offenses occurred, um, more than ten years ago. And in that, um, in the meantime, um, this gentleman has been operating in the, um, industry and comes highly recommended, um, and, uh, is, is highly regarded, um, among his peers and, um, and, uh, employers. And I think we did receive a letter of support from, um, his current employer at Ward's Steakhouse, and he's looking to, uh, the reason why he's applying for an operator's license is to supplement his income at this time, which a lot of service industry folks are doing. Um, at this time, I, I guess I would like to, the other question that I asked Mr. Lind was, um, there is a box on the front of the, the first page of the application, um, asking, uh, about, uh, felony convictions. Mr. Lind did check the box no, um, and I asked him about that, and he explained that that was, he, it was under his impression that that was no longer on his record, which, um, for those of you who are not aware, that those, the person does not have to answer yes if it is no longer on the record, so it was a misunderstanding of the, of the, um, question. So at this time, I guess I would like to, um, see if Mr. Lind would like to, um, address the board in, in any way, and then I'll take questions from, um, board members.
Um, I'd just like to say, yeah, it just, it was a little offensive, like, everything that, you know, was brought up from my past, like, two thousand and two. Um, and I'm, I'm sorry that we even have to be in this meeting. Um, thank you for all your consideration, thank you, Dan Snyder, thank you, you know, Mike Hartman for coming in and speaking on my behalf. Um, all I know is like, I'm a good bartender, and I'll take care of people like they should be taken care of, and I don't do anything wrong anymore, I've learned my lesson, you know? I take care of people at the bar, that's what I do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lind. Um, and I believe Mr. Hartman and Mr. Seidner are here to speak on his behalf, and I would, uh, welcome their comments at this time.
Hi, Dan Seidner from Butterment Restaurant, uh, as I stated in the previous meeting, um, you know, this was not information that I had, uh, at the time of the hire. When I found out, I brought it to Mike's attention, he was very forthcoming about it. And, um, you know, we do not do criminal background checks as part of our hiring process, but we do check references. Mike and I have just worked together for, you know, three or four weeks now, so I don't, uh, know him personally, uh, on a level to talk, but I do check, uh, on references and the references I've received from him, and I believe Brian Ward from Ward's, uh, put it in writing to speak of his character and his, uh, work experience. Mike's a professional bartender, and, you know, right now, finding professional bartenders is a hard thing. Uh, he's done great work for us thus far, we hope that he'll be employed with us for a long time to come. I appreciate that as the owner of the business, I take responsibility for every employee in the building, and I am more than comfortable, uh, taking responsibility for Mike, he's a good man and he deserves this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hartman.
Just very briefly, uh, as with the previous meeting, I've known Mike for, uh, twelve years, having met him, uh, as the bartender at Ward's there, and, uh, uh, a good man with a great character, uh, I think I said he's got warmth of spirit and a, a depth of knowledge about the job, uh, which includes needing to know about human nature, uh, of, of the people, uh, who are on the other side of the bar. Uh, I think that he's helped Brian Ward build a, a great sort of community, uh, surrounding, and as part of that restaurant, I look forward to, if it's possible, to seeing Mike at Butterment and, and being part of a new community in, in, uh, to me, in, in Shorewood there.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I do think that this is an excessive standard, um, that's within the statute and the code, and whether that's within our control or not, um, is another matter for another day. Um, but since it is, uh, before us, I wanted to make sure that we walked through it and that the other board members who are not at committee have the benefit of this information. Um, at this time, I would take any questions from the trustees, or I would entertain a motion. Uh, trustee Stokran.
Thank you, um, could Mr. Lind turn on his camera, please? His choice, I guess. Um, so I'm a little confused about, has the felony been removed? So he's under the, there are two felonies, right? And he's under the impression that they were removed, but yet they come up with, with, when interim chief Leventhal does the background check. So are the two felonies on his record or not?
Acting Chief?
I, I can speak to that, then when you look at the information that's contained within the packet there, that, that criminal, uh, history, it does show at the top of the criminal history convicted felon, felony offender. And so that does still show on his record, there's the one felony conviction for the fleeing from an officer, uh, from Price County back in, uh, twenty oh two is the conviction date on that one.
The bail jumping is not, I thought there was a bail jumping, it was one felony also?
There was a bail jumping that was, uh, originally sent to the district attorney as a felony, but later amended down to a misdemeanor is what was the conviction was, uh, for a misdemeanor level bail jump.
Okay, so it's your understanding then that one felony count is still on his record?
Yes.
And so what is Mr. Lind, did he address that? There is still one felony, so is that the case then, Mr. Lind?
He answered.
Uh, just give me one second, I'm getting my camera back on, sorry, I was in the bathroom, sorry. So what was the question?
I guess there's confusion as to whether or not you still have a felony conviction on your record?
I shouldn't, because two thousand and two, like, that was part of the stipulation of the probation that I received was, once I could complete the probation, the felony would be expunged off my record. And back in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, the bail jumping, it was on a misdemeanor, unlawful use of a telephone, when I was in college.
So we're under the, uh, Tanner and Chief Leventhal has said that that the bail jumping felony is off of your record, but the fleeing an officer is still on your record.
They said the, the which one is still on my record?
Fleeing an officer?
I mean, I can look it up, I don't think it is, but, I mean, he would know better than me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I don't want this to turn into a, um, you know, a, a hearing for you, so, thank you, you've answered the question, and I believe trustee Stokran got the information she was looking for.
Okay.
Um, and they are, yeah, the statute says that, um, if it's a, a felony that's related to, um, the duties under the license, which this is not. Uh, trustee Baldoff?
Um, I just wanted to say to Mr. Lind that, um, if, if you wanna connect with me separately via email, I can make sure if maybe, um, village manager Ewald or somebody can get you my email address. Um, and I'm sure, uh, President McCag, um, could be even more helpful than I could, but, um, you know, there are some avenues that we might be able to help you explore to get these things off your record, since they are so old, and that way you're not going through situations like this, because, you know, that's not what, you know, that, that shouldn't be the intent, uh, or the result of our criminal justice system, that people who, you know, um, paid their dues are still, you know, dealing with those impacts ten and twenty years later, so if you wanna connect with either myself or, sorry, I'm offering for you, Anne, but I assume you, by nodding are agreeing, um, if you wanna connect with us, if we can be helpful, we'd certainly be happy to.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're muted.
Um, yeah, I, it offends me in the statute that it, it makes the stipulation of being duly pardoned, because that sets such a high bar that so few people can attain, um, that, you know, so few people get pardoned, um, even though, you know, they deserve to be, so, um, I think this is an excessive, uh, statute and a very high bar, and unfortunately, we are caught up into it doing our due diligence. So, um, trustee Stokran had her hand back up, um, and then trustee Earthink, and at any time, I would attempt to pay a motion.
I was just curious, Mr. Hartman, I'm sorry, I, I missed your connection to, uh, the application for the operator's license, Mr., if Mr. Hartman, I didn't understand your connection.
You know, I'm just, uh, a, a customer of Ward's, uh, uh, for a long time, and, and, uh, no Mike, I'm an acquaintance of, of Mike's, Mike Lind's.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Trustee Earthink?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. So I move to, uh, recommend the operator's license for Michael Lind.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Earthink, seconded by trustee Warren, was that it? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? I will be supporting this, um, and, uh, because I do not find that anything in the packet, um, meets the standard of habitual offending or a felony that relates to the, um, the license that's being applied for. Trustee Stokran?
Um, I will support this also, uh, the, the approval of the application. I would just like to say, I heard some things about, this shouldn't be before us, uh, in committee and here, and I would just like to say that this is part of our role as trustees, is oversight, transparency, and accountability, and until they change the state law, this is what we need to do, uh, in our role as trustees, so, um, uh, it is what it is, the, the rules are what they are, and the, the convictions are, and you have to have respect for due process, um, but I will support this, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I heard, I guess I wanna counter that by saying that I heard those statements as, um, in a context of compassion for people that are put through this, and that there is, um, our criminal justice system, um, puts a lot of barriers in front of people that are trying to move on with their lives. Um, so it's unfortunate for all of us that we're called into this due process. I don't, I didn't hear anybody saying that they didn't wanna do their job. Um, any other hands raised at this time? Okay, seeing none, I would like to take a roll call vote on this, please. Trustee Butler?
Yes.
Trustee Earthink?
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Stokran?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
President McCag? Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, thank you everyone, thank you, Mr. Lind, and I look forward to seeing you in town.
Thank you very much, look forward to seeing you, come on in to Butterment.
I will, as soon as I get back from Christmas.
Sounds good. Thank you everybody.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we'll take four A, consider police chief job description update, the Rising Group. Thank you very much for your patience. Let's see, should we hand this to, um, Bill, I can, Bill Dranzer, Ewald, do you wanna introduce this, or should we just talk to Ms. Hetrick?
I, I'd be happy to pass it over to Ms. Hetrick, um, she is joining us tonight from the Rising Group, and they've provided an amended job description for, it over to Hetrick for review.
Sure, um, great. Could you, would, would you like to share screen, or how would you, uh, like to do it, President McCag? Um, I thought maybe Rebecca could share a screen, um, or if you've all had a chance to look at it, if you have questions, we can do that, whatever works for you.
Yeah, I think I would like to see, um, typically, we do rely on the trustees to prepare before the meeting, and we all have our packets in front of us electronically. Um, so I think that I would, I wanna remind the, um, the board that this is in front of us this evening as part of the selection process. Um, and so the changes were made to the, um, job description based on the input from the forums that you held over the past couple of weeks. Um, and also, uh, best practice standards, um, bringing it up to date. Um, so at this time, I guess I'd like to open it up to trustees for questions, um, around the job description. And if there is a need to, um, share screen, we can, and I would also say, Ms. Hetrick, if there's anything that you wanna call to our attention in particular, um, this would be a time to do that.
Um, the only thing I would say was, I can think of some things in particular. Generally, I didn't change things much, I tweaked some words, mostly what I did was add, uh, information, and that is based on the input that we received, based on what you said you were looking for in your request for proposal, and what we said we would deliver as a police chief, so I put that in. Um, and then also best practices and which were contained in job descriptions that I've done, uh, before for other municipalities. And then yesterday or Friday, I think. Um, uh, Rebecca mentioned to me, because I asked about the emergency management aspect, because that's a particular, um, uh, area that I'm in, and she said that the chief was considered to be the emergency management director for the village, and so then I added all that emergency management, uh, language. So that's, I'll just say that as a, uh, you know, to warm you up.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you, yeah, all the additions where they seem, you know, very contemporary and contextual and accurate, and they're the types of things that you don't think about until you see them, and then say, oh yeah, that's a really good thing to have in there, so.
Thank you.
Um, any questions from trustees at this time, or would you like to make a motion?
There are, I will add, I will add that there are a couple of, um, items that I, uh, are highlighted in there, in the most recent one that you have, and those were suggestions from, um, the president of the police commission. So I changed those, that's why it's different than the one you originally received.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Stokran?
Thank you, President McCag, uh, I have a, a question about item J is in Julie. Uh, the very, at the end of the item, it talks about, and I'm sorry, I'm going from the original, I did not have time to go through the updated version that was sent at four thirty, so I'm going from the one that was in the packet from last Thursday. Um, notify and recommend further action to the village president as soon as possible. I'm wondering if we wanna add the village manager also, because that's the person who is most responsible for village operations.
Okay, and we did, um, we did change that a little one, trustee Stokran. Um, it's essentially the same, it's just that that is not at the end, instead, we kept the paragraph that you see, or the sentence that you see deleted at the beginning, we kept. Um, and then we could very easily add village manager to that, if you like that.
That would be my preference. And one vote.
I think it's a good suggestion.
I do too, actually.
I did have one other item, um, I believe it's N is in Nancy, keep such books and records as necessary or required by law. Be familiar with public records law and as official custodian of the department's records, blah, blah, blah. Um, I think we need to make, responder direct the response to public records requests, I'd add in a timely manner. And in an effort to, I know that's vague, but it does add some urgency to it. And I'm looking for something that we can put in here that would make it clear that we want department data available in a timely and easily accessible manner to the public, whether it's trapped, you know, we're doing it now, I just wanna make sure that we have into the job description that we want, we've made improvements in this, and we want this We've made improvements in this and we want this to continue the the availability of police department data in terms of complaints, stops, public records. I just would like to somehow add that element urgency and responsibility for that element of transparency. What would you recommend?
Well, I'll tell you, and President McCaig also had sent an email to Rebecca, which Rebecca and I talked about this afternoon. And I think that it's in I talks about the data. I think that's where it belongs as opposed to public records. Because I'm thinking more of people that want information if they're going to file a complaint, et cetera, et cetera. And I like the adding timely manner to it. I think the data thing probably needs a discussion. I originally had transparent, be transparent about sharing data in there. And then there was discussion that you have been transparent. It's just that apparently your Phoenix system or something doesn't allow for, I, I, I'm not sure, I don't understand that exactly, but makes it seem not transparent. And so I you know, I agree that something more needs to be in there about the data. And so I welcome discussion on what you'd like in there.
I'm just looking for timely reporting of pertinent. Well, I don't, I would look back to see things that like the HRC and the Public Safety Committee have deemed important enough to put in, interim chief Leventhal could. You know, we just want to make sure that the data that we're getting now on the website that we make sure that that, the candidate coming in knows that this is a priority for us in terms of transparency, accountability and open government.
Yeah, I, I agree that I was asking for a language like that to be put into and I stumbled upon, I stumbled in the same way of not exactly knowing what the language would be. Because it is addressed, there is a phrase that says, you know, reporting to the village board and any other committees. So that's kind of covered with the HRC connection. Generating reports, it's kind of in there, but I, I agree, it doesn't really reflect sort of the current level of accessibility that we're looking for. But we also do have limitations with the data collection and data sharing. So it's just hard to nail that down. So that's, that's why I didn't bring it forward because I wasn't really sure how much we could accomplish tonight.
Okay, I need to have the job description by January 9th, which is when we plan on going live with the job announcement. So I don't know, Rebecca, if you wanted to share screen, could we, could we put new wording in there and then would that make us? You know, I, I don't know. You tell me how I get this through so that I can use it by January, not the ninth, the seventh, excuse me.
I guess my concern is just that people, people live online and they live on their phones. And do we need to add a component there about digital access, timely and accurate that?
Point taken. Trustee Orndorfer and then trustee Earthing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be, my immediate reaction is I'd be comfortable adding some language about timely. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I think that sets an expectation.
Okay.
Corraling. But I get a little wary of going much beyond that as that can as we risk going into, you know, mission creep in areas where we don't have systems that can deliver on what might be expected at this point. I mean, that, that's the reality. But I think setting an expectation for you know, responding to requests in a timely manner makes a lot of sense. It doesn't necessarily tie our hands or make promises that we can't keep. Just my own reaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Earthing?
Yeah, I guess my question is with, with this language. Is this necessary for a job description? I, I'm sure there's going to be opportunities for us as a village board to communicate our wishes to the new chief. I'm not quite sure we need to, you know, keep on adding and get into the weeds with, with a job description. So that's just my opinion. I think there'll be plenty of opportunities to, to bring this up and to solidify this as part of the job. But I'm not sure how detailed we need to get in this, in this exact job description. The other thing that I just, that has kind of stuck out to me is in section two, physical ability, they need to have explosive strength. You know, just going through this, this list here, it, it looks like we need a superhero. Is this, how do we, how do we, how do we test for, you know, finger dexterity and, and do we, are we going to run, are we going to run these people through stamina and extended flexibility tests? They need to crouch, twist, reach, push, pull, move equipment. I mean, it's just, it, it, it seems seems a little strange, but I, I know we need this. But it does seem a little, a little strange to have this in a job, in a job description, but.
Well, I, I agree with you and I've never seen it in a job description before, but that was your job description, so I left it alone.
It's not going to hurt, you know, these are all good things, but it seems like we need, we need Superman here as the police chief.
Yeah, we won't be testing for any of that. I mean, they will undergo a physical exam, but it's not going to be an exam to see if they have explosive strength, as you said.
There's going to be no kicking down of doors to, for the, for the, okay, just curious, thank you.
Trustee Warren?
Yeah, I was, trustee, trustee Earthing stole a lot of my thunder. I was going to say, you know, in my experience, job descriptions change all the time. So I, I think that I fully take, you know, trustee McCaig, trustee Stokbrand, I think you make great points. But I think we can probably backfill that after we get the job description out and continue to work and evolve this document. Going again to trustee Earthing's point before me, I do think some of the, like especially like in the physical ability section, I understand that you need to, I, I don't see why that's incredibly necessary. They need to pass a physical examination, but when you put things in there like explosive strengths, you begin to, you begin to limit your pool of candidates and you begin to, especially thinking in terms of diversity, you might, you might be really cutting, by wording it this way, you cut off your pool of candidates. I mean, I think in terms of physical prowess, I do really need more than passing the examination itself. But again, I think we can take these things offline and make kind of more holistic changes to this policy because again, job descriptions change periodically and I, I don't know that it's going to move. I don't know that change, I don't know that changing our job description, it needs to be done prior to January 7th, I would like to get it done.
It's just that I included in the packet. That's, that's the only reason I'd like to have it current, but I would agree that, that you kind of limit your pool and also it looks very old fashioned to me to have that, that in there. It's, it's really not something that's in a job description anymore. And to whichever trustee mentioned us going into super detail in the job description about some of these things, I also agree with that because that's what our questions get at when they're interviewed. You know, that's, that's when we get at that. How do you handle, you know, a records request? You know, a trustee's daughter is arrested for this, you know, how do you do this, this, this? How do you make that available, those kinds of things? And those are really questions to see how they answer as opposed to really nailing them down in the job description, but I'm, you're the clients. So I'll put in there what you like.
I will just echo some of the points that Arthur and Wes made and then also Deborah, I think, you know, you've hired a lot more police chiefs than any of us have. So we certainly you know, appreciate your feedback and guidance in this process. You know, that's, you guys are the experts. There's a reason we hired you to do this because we don't have the expertise to do it. So I appreciate your, your insight into what can be kind of modernized in the job description. And I, I do very much agree with trustee Warren that we want to be careful about how some of this is worded and how it is going to come across. So I would be in favor of you know, making those changes to kind of back some of those, that physical requirement stuff out and kind of make minimal changes to get this in place, to get it posted on the timeline that we, that we want. I certainly agree with the point too, that you get, you're going to get most of this. Most of the information we want is going to come in that interview process. It's not just by them checking a box. You know, we could have a 50-page-long job description with every single possible thing they could be dealing with and they might say, yes, I, I can do all these things, but you really have to have that conversation through the interview process to get it, how someone would, would actually operate in the job. And you know, I just don't want to get too in the weeds about making any of these changes, making this overly detailed, overly complex. You know, things like, you know, how they respond to records requests, you know, I, I agree, that's important. It's something we should talk about with them, but you know, the, the presumption is that they will follow the law, which is as soon as possible and without delay. So I don't think we need to get overly in the weeds on things like that. You know, in the job description, when we can have that conversation with them through the interview process and let them know that, you know, transparency and accountability is incredibly important to us as a village and we expect our next chief to, to be on board with that.
Okay, so I could, as, as trustee Stokman has had, had added, I'd be happy to add village manager to the emergency situation that, that, that the chief also notified the village manager. And I also would be happy to add timely manner because I, I think that's pretty important in N. I'm also, I also then could add, you know, something about timely manner and accountability and open government. Vague wording in I, which is the data section, just, just to, to make it a little more comprehensive. It's you know, like you said, a job description can be 50 pages long, but it really doesn't need to go in the weeds that much. But we do want them to know what we do expect. So if those changes, and then to take out the physical stuff, I mean, at the end, it says that a conditional offer, you know, will be made. But it's based on whether you can pass a physical, whether you can pass a psych, a psych exam. And whether you can, you know, you have a successful background. So you know, even when you offer it to them, that there's still conditions on that.
So I think that's a great summary of the feedback and kind of the limitations or, you know, putting parameters on those. Trustee Stokbrand, I see your hand is up. Do you have anything else to add? Because I, I'd like to conclude discussion at this time and look for a motion.
I just wanted to be clear then, is she going to update physical ability so that it looks more contemporary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Trustee Bachhorst, do you have anything to add? I think you're the only one we haven't heard from.
No, I'm good and I appreciate the discussion and the, the previous ones we've had regarding this and look forward to moving on.
Okay. Great. Is there anyone in the members of the public who would like to be heard on this matter? We can allow one minute per person. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands or microphones. So at that time, I'd like to entertain a motion and I believe the motion would be to adopt the police chief job description with the changes discussed this evening. Or not. If you want to support it, that's what it would be.
Still moved?
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Earthing, seconded by trustee Bachhorst. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, voice or show of hands?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to four C, consider engineering review for 4480 Lake Drive. I am going to ask manager Ewald to introduce this and, and hand it over to whoever in whatever order.
With you this evening, we have our village engineer, Phil Budsek, who is joining us tonight to provide us with a brief update on 4480 Lake Drive. I mean, I know he had an opportunity to talk to Miller engineers today, so we're going to hear that update as well as provide you with some options in terms of how to proceed with regards to the property. So I'm going to turn it over to Phil and he's going to share his screen. Because he has a brief presentation to take you through and just refresh your memory and some of the details associated with this property.
Thanks, Rebecca.
And before, thanks, hold on, and just one moment. So and what's before us this evening is just the request to consider getting contracting with, to get a second engineering opinion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so keep that in mind as we listen to the this presentation. Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Is everyone able to see my screen? I have a PowerPoint on the screen.
Yes.
Okay, so this is in regards to the 4480 North Lake Drive storm sewer repair. We had back in June was the last update that we provided. So I'll go back in time and give brief update or brief history on the project. So 2019 was when the storm sewer structure was damaged. Here's some photos. Again, this is on the bluff of Lake Michigan. The soils in the area are, you know, not, they don't behave like predictably. So it's a situation where you know, there's engineering judgment and Miller engineers use the engineer for this project. They do this type of work, you know, all over the state and they developed the design based on the information they had and it's, we've had, you know, some issues with it, which we'll go through today, but we did have good news today, which I will share at the end of the, the presentation. So we're headed in the right path and hopefully there's a light at the end of the tunnel here. So full background, so Miller engineers and scientists, they completed the geotechnical investigation in spring of 2020. Then they completed design in 20, also in 2020, summer, fall. Received bids last year and then construction was over to winter. And then in June is when we came to the board requesting additional funds to provide additional reinforcing for the lower retaining wall. That work was completed in July. The final contract price, so the contracts closed at this point was about a million dollars. So storm sewers here, it's been repaired. There's concrete wall here protecting it. The rest of the bluff was stabilized. This is the, the lower retaining wall. And then the upper retaining wall, obviously at the top of the bluff. So July, the additional reinforcement was installed right after, literally like a week after the last reinforcement was put in, there was a heaviest rain we had all year, very significant rain, actually about four inches in six hours. And there was some additional movement observed after that rain. But fortunately, it had the additional anchors in her. I suspect the wall would have probably failed at that point. Just to give some perspective on the movement, so from May 13th to July 28th, so this is when the anchors were all installed. There's about nine to 10 inches of movement in the most severe area. So the most severe area is this lower retaining wall in this one specific area. From July 28th to August 11th, so the period of time when we had this large rain event, there is about an inch to inch and a half of movement in this, and movement, by movement, I mean bowing of the wall. So the top part of the wall is moving closer to the lake. The bottom part of the wall is essentially staying in place. And then from August 11th and actually to, they measured last Friday, the movement is, is almost negligible. It was point, I had point two five, so quarter inch to half inch from this period of time. And when you actually look from August 11th to December 11th, in most spots, there wasn't any movement. It's really kind of getting within the realm of accuracy of the survey. When you start to get down to a quarter inch, half inch with the survey techniques they're using, that's essentially the realm of accuracy. So there hasn't been any So there hasn't been any significant, and if there is movement, it's been very minor since this large rain event. We haven't had real significant rain events since that August event, but we have had, we've had a couple. Inch, half inch events in the past month, so it has gotten tested a little bit more. So just for perspective of the walls, this pink line on the top of the sheet, that's the upper retaining wall. So the property is on the, you know, above the sheet essentially, so top of bluff here. Lake Drive and above here, and then the lower retaining wall, this is where all the additional reinforcement was installed. Is here and then the storm sewer, here's the concrete wall for the storm sewer and the storm sewers are here, so they're actually. Away from the retaining wall, but this retaining wall provides access to these structures for village, for the village staff in the future. Then Lake Michigan is obviously at the the bottom of the page here, so twenty-three additional anchors were installed in July. In addition to the additional anchors, after that rain event, additional soil borings were collected too. So there are eight borings that were collected, two of them were nine feet deep and six of them were two feet. So this MB one, MB two are the two deeper borings. There was a crack that was observed after that rain event here, it was. Two feet deep or so and Miller engineers actually came back and put in some bentonite, which is a. Type of clay that expands when it is hydrated, so when water is added to seal this up so that. Any water that comes off here wouldn't get into the crack and set kind of create more pressure on the lower retaining wall. So these two borings, MB one and MB two also have monitoring, or they put in a small. Pipe to monitor the groundwater levels. So there are two nine foot deep borings in in these borings, they observed a weakened soil zone about five feet deep. So that's where they're suspecting that the top five feet is what's sliding. It's in a stiff, a very stiff soil zone, so that's kind of unexpected. They weren't expecting the stiff or very stiff soils to behave like that. And then water is also a bit of a mystery at the site. Because right after they put in, or they drilled MB one, they found the water. Came up in that boring about five and a half feet deep. And then several days later, they came back and the water level in MB one had dropped and had risen in MB two, so. It's flowing downhill, so that part of it makes sense. It must be seeping through some of the scarps and cracks and fissures. But this was in a somewhat dry period and there's still quite a bit of water here. And then also water level in MB three, which is this boring down at. On the east side of the lower retaining wall, also had water at the ground surface, while the two borings adjacent to it. Didn't have any water. So there's some sort of, there's water in the sub soils here and we don't know exactly. Where it's coming from, other than surface runoff is the the main, what you typically would see in clay soils. Unless there's a sand seam or something else that transmits more water. So Miller engineers, and so what their latest suggestion is to relieve some of the pressure on the lower retaining wall. Is to put in basically an interceptor storm system. So just essentially a drain tile or French drain to to capture any other runoff from the yard. That's coming off the yard and would otherwise go to this upper retaining wall and then find its way down to the lower retaining wall. So put in an interceptor pipe and pipe it into our storm sewer structure. And then at the lower retaining wall, where they've observed some of the water put into east-west. Collector drains and then also pipe that to the storm sewer structure. And then the idea is that there's this additional water pressure. That's in the, creating additional hydrostatic pressure on the lower retaining wall. And creating it to, allowing it to potentially move. They did observe some erosion in this area too, after that August eighth rain event, so we know that there is surface runoff. That's getting through here and quite a bit of it that's creating erosion. They did grade the. This upper part of the yard to drain this way, but it appears that surface runoff is still finding its way onto the bluff. And potentially saturating some of these soils. So that's their latest. Theory, I guess, of what's going on at the site as far as, and then the other thing is. At that five foot depth where they they believe that the surface is sliding, the water is always present at that depth. So they're suspecting that that's also kind of lubricating the slide surface, so there's water there. There isn't as much friction between the soils, so that's contributing to potential movement of the wall. Here's, this is a cross section, so kind of a cutout of the bluff. The upper retaining wall is on the left, I mean, there is stone behind the retaining wall, which is supposed to take, you know, collect the water and drain water. And relieve pressure, but they're proposing to put in essentially, like I said, a French drain here, pipe in the bottom. And permeable soils on top to collect any runoff and route it around the upper retaining wall. Prevent as much water as possible from making its way to the bluff between the two walls. And then for the lower wall, they would are proposing to have these two pipes that are installed up the slope. To about the location of this MB two. So at that, so once we kind of got Roger's opinion on the the situation. We all, the village staff and I met and we decided it's a good time to just kind of pause and. Pull in someone else to take a look at this, because it's not a situation where it's imminent like it was back in June. We're worried about the wall failing, you know, if we had a heavy rain event. But we don't feel like it's in its position where it's it's fully stabilized at this point. So we we looked into an independent review from other local or other geotechnical experts. So I contacted several geotechnical engineers, I received four proposals. GZA, Geo-Environmental, I'll just kind of summarize each of the highlights of the information that we received from. So GZA, I thought there's just very, I thought all of them were very strong, some of them were more focused in. Mining or other areas, but I thought all all four firms are very strong firms, very good geotechnical engineers. GZA, they they, to me, had the best proposal. They have the recent Lake Bluff, Lake Michigan Bluff experience. So they have been familiar with soils in this area, familiar with the challenges of the Lake Michigan Bluff. So they had a good mix of the local bluff experience and then. Geotechnical engineers who have thirty, forty years of slope stability experience. So I thought that was very, very strong. ECS, they also had a lot of Lake Michigan Bluff experience, but it was from fifteen years or so ago. So no real recent experience, had lots of experience with mining. And slope, slope stability for mining and those sorts of things, so they had a strong experience too. Scott Ludlow, he's a one man show, owns his own business. He's got great experience with excavation support, earth retention, mining. He's done a lot of expert witness type of work, so very deep resume, he just. He's, he has, he has a little bit of Lake Michigan Bluff experience, I know, but he didn't show any of that in his resume. And he doesn't have his, I guess, as deep of a resume as someone like GZA does or ECS. And then Briarly, they have significant retaining wall experience, but it was primarily in Western United States. A lot more sort of rock stabilization in the mountains, that sort of thing. And not any local Lake Michigan Bluff experience specifically. So costs varied from about forty-five hundred to ninety-six hundred and GZA is who who we recommend with. Their cost was seventy-five hundred. So that's all I have at this point. I can answer questions on any part of the presentation that you'd like.
So thank you very much. Am I on mute or can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So basically, just to to wrap up or to recap, why we're here this evening is that the work that was proposed. And completed, the feeling is that the bus is not totally stabilized at this time. The engineer that did the work to date is proposing an additional drainage drainage system. To prevent additional movement. And what staff is recommending is that we hit pause before investing more money into this. Just to see what the options are, since we've already, to protect the investment that we've already made. So the answer to that is an independent review and so there is a recommendation to contract with. GZA at seventy-five hundred dollars. So. To assess where we are and where it may need to go. And that may save us money or it may not. So that's what's before us this evening and I would take questions from the trustees at this time, trustee Orndorfer.
Thank you. Yeah, kind of a basic question. I mean, I'm wondering, is forecasting part of this project at all? And so far as, you know, I mean, in the past ten years, we've seen, you know, significant number of elevated rainfall. In the state, in the region, I mean, I'm just wondering if, you know, we might be looking at longer term problems down the pike. And whether that's anything that might be, you know, fall under the purview of a review like this, or whether it's something that could be. You know, something that we could take a look at. Thank you.
I didn't ask that any of these firms to specifically look at. Impacts of, you know, historical rain events. That's something that, you know, Roger would consider in his initial design and I can ask him what he assumed for that. And certainly the idea here would be to. To divert, you know, water from pretty much any size event that we can from the surface. And obviously, you still have whatever rain falls on the bluff. We we can divert with the pipes below, but there'll be a certain amount of rain that we can't divert. But I can ask those questions of Roger. I'm not exactly sure what his, what he assumes for a rainfall event.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you hear me or was I muted? Okay, trustee Orndorfer, is that an answer that you need this evening in order to take action? Or is it more that you are asking if it's relevant in terms of developing a solution?
Both, but yes, I can, I can, I could vote based on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, other questions that will help you take action on the item before us, trustee Silkbrand?
So did I see, is there, to put in the French drain on the west. Or most inland. The drain tile plan and the interceptor, would it, would everything then go to the north to catch the this, the main storm sewer?
That's correct.
So you'd you'd build the drainage behind the walls. And then you'd send it over to the storm sewers to the north and it's a French drain tile plan on the western one or the upper. And the lower was also some sort of, so you'll be excavating again, right, behind the wall?
Yeah, they'd be digging a shallow trench to put in. The pipe and the clear, the stone material.
We have a permanent easement there, so we're good on all this?
We have a. Easement around the storm sewer itself, so this, we don't have an easement for the top of the wall, so it's something the property owner. I guess is, we do have a temporary construction easement for when that's still in effect, I guess, from when we constructed the work. But we didn't ask for a permanent easement for the retaining walls, because these are more or less turned over to the property owner once we're. They're. More satisfied that we're not, they're not moving anymore or that everything's stabilized.
And so we're thinking, if we get this, if we decide to go forward with the the second opinion. And depending on what that finds, this plan, the the plan that Roger Miller has come up with. Is there a ballpark figure, was that a hundred and thirty?
For Roger's plan, he was expecting quotes from some contractors this week. The preliminary thought is it would be, it'd be under fifty for something like this and probably quite a bit under fifty.
Under fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
This is all handwork, it's not, there shouldn't be large equipment needed for this kind of work at this point.
So it does beg the question, if we had put this in in June instead of now. I mean, I just, back to the question I asked in June, you know, we were doubling down on, you know, reinforcing the wall, the wall's still moving. And now we're going to go to defer deflecting the water to the. Yeah. I guess I think a second opinion at this point is a great idea. It looks to me, we have spent over a hundred thousand dollars on Miller engineering so far. Which at this point is probably ten percent of our costs and given it is a very heavily engineered project. It would just, it would be nice to know a confidence level, so I'm willing to spend the money to try to get a confidence level. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or voices of support or a lack of support for an independent review at this time?
In support.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. So I I move to approve SGZA for seventy-five hundred dollars to conduct an engineering review. Of the forty-four eighty Lake Drive storm sewer improvements.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Earthing, seconded by trustee Warren, any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote, please. And we can stop screen sharing.
Aye.
Trustee Paul Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Bachhorst?
Yes.
President McKing?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Phil. Moving on to, moving on to item five, and oh, and thanks, Leanne, too. Moving on to item five, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Baldoff, any discussion? Trustee Silkbrand?
I'd like to pull item B as in Betty.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five B?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor or any discussion? All those in favor, show of hands or voice?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That's the consent agenda minus five B. Moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. That would be five B, consider regular village board meeting minutes, December sixth, twenty twenty-one. Trustee Stokbrand.
Yes, I just wanted to add, the group, I think in the note about my trustee report, it was the East Capital Neighborhood Neighbor Association files a suit with Milwaukee County. It was in Milwaukee County with, against the Shorewood Village Board of Appeals. Thank you. I move that that amendment be adopted to the minutes or that they be amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, so trustee, motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Warren. Any discussion regarding the amendment to the minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands or voice?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven zero for the amended minutes. Moving on to item seven, public hearings, there are none this evening. And moving on to item eight, citizens to be heard, this item is for matters not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the, in attendance that would like to be heard this evening? If so, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself and say your name, address, and turn your camera on. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Does anyone else see anything? All right, no citizens to be heard. Moving on to new business, item nine, nine A. Consider proposal for lead and copper revised rule review. Director Bushlick.
Good evening. You have in your packets a proposal from City Water to do a, to perform a review of the revised lead and copper rule. As you know, Shorewood, like all public water systems in the United States, has been operating under the lead and copper rule since nineteen ninety-one. The intent of that rule is just like the name would imply, is to regulate and monitor lead and copper in the nation's drinking water through the various systems. Currently, under that rule, the village tests for lead and copper on a two-year cycle. We test approximately thirty, usually it's upwards of thirty homes. And thirty of those samples are provided to the DNR. And the, those sampling results are then applied against the nationwide rule. To date, we have not had any, any samples that would have triggered any action under the lead and copper rule. However, in recent years, there's been far more attention given to those contaminants in drinking water. And the EPA has provide, has proposed revisions to the current lead and copper rule. And those revisions are projected to have a very significant operating impact on the village of Shorewood in particular. And our staff has already begun the planning for this work. That rule is expected to be implemented in October of twenty twenty-four. So we're a few years out, but as I mentioned, the operating impacts are anticipated to be significant. There are five key areas under that rule. One of them includes maintaining and providing an inventory of all public and private service line materials. We do not at this point have anything that would be remotely considered a comprehensive inventory. We did write that exercise into the current water meter replacement system. So as meters are being replaced, the technicians are recording both the service line or the service line material as it comes into the water meter. That is going to be a tremendous, that information is going to be tremendously valued as we put this inventory together. We have slightly better records on the public side, but again, there's going to need to be quite a bit of work done there. There are going to be changes to the sampling itself, both the methods for the sampling and the frequency. We, there'll be some new trigger limits that are established. And what a trigger limit will generally do is across the sample size, if, if the contaminants are measured at a particular level and that level exceeds a trigger limit, there are multiple actions that the utility is required to take. To, under the current rule, we have never exceeded that trigger level. But some of the sampling changes in the revised rule, that they drop the limit significantly, we also change how we sample water. Currently, we use nationwide what is called a first draw sample. So the resident will hold a one-liter bottle under the faucet and they're instructed to use the first water after a rest. So, for example, in the morning, your first draw of water, that water actually is residing basically within the immediate plumbing of that particular faucet that they choose to use. Under the revised sampling, the resident will be instructed to take five consecutive one-liter samples. The intent of that is to draw further through the home plumbing system and out into the service. Where, obviously, where we have that lead concern. So we do expect, it's highly likely that we will have some trigger limit exceedance from, based on those two changes in particular. The rule also requires some significant changes in follow-up procedures to any samples that exceed the action level. Those will be some pretty significant communication and administrative changes by the utility. And the final key area is the development of a lead service line replacement program. As you know, we do not currently have such a program. Under the revised rule, we would not necessarily be required immediately to begin replacing lead services unless a, a number of different actions occurred. One of those trigger actions is the exceedance of that ninety percentile value on the, the the lead returns. So it's highly likely at some point, perhaps sooner, perhaps later, but we will very likely eventually need to begin replacing lead, lead services. It's staff's opinion that it's, it's in the village's best interest to begin planning and begin the development of that program immediately rather than wait until such point that a trigger level limit may be exceeded. So that kind of wraps back into all of these changes that will occur and the impact that they're going to have on the operation of the utility, its staffing, its administration, its management, and particularly its financing. So we have asked City Water to provide a proposal to begin review of this rule and the specific impacts it will have on our utility operation. You've heard City Water's name before. They've done a significant amount of work with us in recent years. Just as a point of information for some of the newer members, several years ago, our long, long time utility foreman retired. And our current utility foreman, Dave Kuntz, was promoted to that position. We utilized the services of City Water for probably eighteen months or so, kind of as an organizational leadership development. They spent quite a bit of time with Dave, provided some mentoring assistance, but also helped us review, develop some standard operating procedures. And really just gave Dave a great platform from which to begin his, his work as utility foreman. He has done a phenomenal job, but a lot of credit to City Water for providing him the tools he needed to do so. So, because of their knowledge of our system, our staff and our operations, we did ask City Water for that proposal, which they provided and is in your packets. It is under the threshold limit for the purchasing policy under, under several levels. So there's no, there's no, excuse me, there is no exception required. But we are asking your favorable consideration of this proposal so we can begin this very important work.
Thank you, Leanne. So at this time, I'd like to know from trustees whether you are in support of this proposal at this time or if there are any questions that you need answered in order to take action to consider this proposal this evening. I fully support. I think we do need to start this immediately. Trustee Earthing?
I agree. I do fully support this, and I think this is going to be a very high priority for our community within the next five years. So fully support. And I guess just out of curiosity, where does this fit into the budget?
This would be pulled from the engineering line item in the water utility budget.
Thank you, Leanne.
And to clarify, to confirm, the reason why we're asking City Water to do it is that internal staff, it would be beyond the scope of what they could take on, given their responsibilities.
In part, in large part, City Water and its, its engineers and staff have a better understanding of the revised rule and the implications it will pose to our utility operations. But also, you know, they bring an objective eye and they're intimately familiar with the operations of our utility. And I truly believe that they can provide some very important guidance to us. This is very likely going to require a restructure of our utility staffing. And there are probably multiple ways that we can do that. And I think, like I said, they're going to provide, I believe, a very important objective review of that staffing and these additional duties, particularly the administrative duties, and how we might best position ourselves to successfully implement this rule.
So there's a strategic benefit to this investment as well. Your trustee Stokbrand?
Thank you. So this would be just for, to help us meet the current, I mean, I guess I see complying with LCR as a long-term project, but we would be approving, this would be done this year, right? What, what we would be, this be, and if I'm not, tell me about with this development of a lead service line replacement program, that sounds huge.
It will be large and it will have pretty significant implications on multiple levels and layers. Certainly not the least of which will be financial. But there's going to be a lot of discussion regarding this topic in your future. And that's why we want to begin these conversations as soon as we can. And this planning rule, this planning review, I believe, is going to give us a very good framework for, for those future discussions.
And so this is the biggest interface for the average resident would be, if you're a homeowner, would be this development of the lead service line replacement program. Whereas there's also a lot of operational things that would affect you from a staff point of view.
I think that's an, I think that's an accurate statement, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Orndorfer?
I can make a motion. Sorry, I move a ward of a professional services agreement to City Water LLC for a lead and copper revised rule review in an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Orndorfer, seconded by trustee Earthing. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye or voice?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, so proposal is accepted seven zero. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to nine B, AMI water meter replacement program update. It would be Leanne also.
This would be me again. So as noted in your, in the update memo in your packet, we are currently on a pause for the program. The last, the last recent appointment that was taken was completed on Friday, December seventeenth. As noted, Vanguard, who is the installation subcontractor, has had some difficulty with operation of many of the private valves. That difficulty is entirely due to the age of the valves and their inability to operate them and because of their age and lack of maintenance. When that has occurred, they contact our utility staff and ask the water to be shut off at the curb. Certainly, that is something we can do. In some cases, it's a very easy process and others it is not. But in any case, it certainly helps to have temperatures above freezing and no snow cover. And so approximately a month ago, we began discussing this with Vanguard and the contract holder, which is Midwest Meter, and came to the conclusion that it would not be efficient to be doing multiple, several, up to, you know, eight or so of these curb shut offs on a daily basis. As we explained to Vanguard, under snow cover, it would take our crews significantly more time to locate and clear and operate that valve. Their, really, their, their contract or business model essentially is, is based on be able, being able to do these meter changes in under a half hour. And certainly, that would not be the case if we were trying to locate curb stops under snow cover or in frozen ground. And so they determined that it would really not be efficient for them to maintain a crew during January, February, and into early March. And we agreed that we would pause the program for that reason. We're looking at bringing them back as early as weather will allow. And right now, we're targeting mid-March for that, that restart. Certainly, that will depend on weather and snow cover, but that is our goal. As of Wednesday, when the memo was written, or Thursday morning, first thing, we had completed just over half, fifty percent of the water meter replacements. In addition to the fifty percent of the meter replacements, we also completed the same amount of cross connection inspections and meter service line inventory inspections, as we were talking about a couple of minutes ago. So as mentioned, we will be doing communication with residents to let them know that this is on hiatus and that they can expect to hear from us again in March. We will circle back to the areas where work has already been done and send out final notices to those who have not responded and make an effort to really clean, clean up and finish those areas before moving into the final area, which is essentially the southern portion of the village. I guess, rather than continuing to go over some of the things that were in the memo, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. So yeah, this is an update. It doesn't require any action this evening. And I'm sure that if the, when the program moves forward, Leanne will be back in front of us. But questions at this time, trustee Earthing?
Um, you know, I'll just keep it short, I, I, what was your, what's, what's your impression, your overall impression on, on how this has gone so far? Has it gone as expected? Has it, has it been more, um. You know, more challenging than you originally thought? When they came to do our meter, uh, I felt like the, uh, the, the guys that came in were extremely just burnt out, like they were. They didn't, like, they just did not want, you know, nobody, I, I feel like a lot of people were calling in and, and not a lot of people want to do this anymore in the village. Uh, maybe it was at the end of the cycle here, because we, we had it done later. But, um, there was, there was, you know, they, they were not uh in a great mood about it and, um. So I just wanted to get your impression on, on your feelings, on how this has gone down and, uh, and will there be any changes moving into the next cycle?
Um, you know, I think we had all, um, we were all optimistic, cautiously optimistic. That we would be a little further along than fifty percent at this point. Certainly, we've, we've met a number of challenges, as I mentioned. In, in certain respects, the condition of the private plumbing. Was in, in, was much worse than, than we had hoped, um, we were going to find. Um, and I think like, like everyone, Vanguard has had some challenges with. Um, attracting and maintaining staff. You know, this is a, it's a difficult job in the, in the best of conditions. Um, you know, the labor market currently is, is, doesn't, you know, it's, it's not favorable to a lot of employers. And I think it's particularly difficult for them. Um, we've had a couple, um, you know, they've had quite a bit of turnover. Um, in, in the five months, four months that they've been here. Um, but they have had a couple of um installers who. Our staff has worked very closely with, um, and, and frankly are, are great at what they do. Um, are very, very knowledgeable and, and we've been able to, to work very well with them. Um, we have made a specific request, we've made a couple of specific requests, um, related to the restart of the program. One is that both of those technicians um must be on staff when they come back. Um, the other is that we, we specifically requested that they have a designated project manager. Um, and that project manager is able to project manage, um, maintain schedules. Check in on, you know, any, anything that might need some follow-up. Um, do QA QC on the daily reports, um, that did not happen this first round. Um, that was the intent, but because of their um staffing difficulties, that project manager actually became an installer. Um, and didn't spend nearly as much time project managing as anyone really um would have liked to have seen. So, like I said, we've made some very specific requests about what we would like to see from that installation crew when we start up. You know, I, there have been some growing pains, most certainly, um, we've had some, some rough cases in some particular households. But, you know, I mean, for the most, most part, I've, I've gotten, quite honestly, a pretty equal number of complaints versus compliments. So, um. I, you know, I, I take that as a good day, because typically we don't get a lot of compliments on certain things. So, um, cert- you know, there's things we can most definitely improve and, and we're communicating with Vanguard and Midwest Meter about. We, what we think are the best ways to do that.
Uh, thank you, Leanne, and I'll just, uh, I'll add a compliment in there, because ours was very smooth. I mean, it was done within fifteen, twenty minutes and we had no issues whatsoever. You know, I, I think, you know, when people, some of the people had issues, they were very loud about it. And I think it scared a lot of people in the community to get their meters done, because they did not want flooding or they did not want that to happen at, at their house. So, I think that kind of, some of those issues kind of hurt the community and that project, the, the speed of the project, so, you know, um. Yeah, so.
Absolutely, yep.
You know, I was, we had a cone-shaped, uh, whatever, uh, doohickey and, uh, and, um, you know, but it was very smooth and. And, you know, appreciated the service level, so, so thank you and, um, you know, hopefully we can get those messages out there as well, so people understand that not everybody's getting flooded.
Yeah, and, and I would just, if I could just take one moment to point out that, you know, we have had a handful, less than a handful. Um, of some very difficult scenarios, we'll call it. In every one of those cases that could have been avoided had the homeowner properly maintained. Maintain that, um, infrastructure, the private plumbing that led into the meter. Um, in every case, it was because of the condition of those valves. So, you know, we're, I understand, um, the, the challenge we face with social media. And how, how quickly some of that news travels, even it's, it's not entirely accurate. Um, but, you know, we're, we're working on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Trustee Salkbrand?
So, would it help for the people who haven't had theirs done? Would it help to say, exercise your valves?
Um. Possibly, you know, a- at this point, that might be a little. Too little, too late, you know, if we're talking about eighty-year-old valves that haven't been exercised in, in at least twenty years on a good day.
So it would probably require a plumbing call.
Right, um, I would, well, I would say, if, if I purchased a home with a valve in that condition, I wouldn't touch it. Just because I'd be afraid of what would happen if I did.
So there's nothing that we can do to make the second half go any easier, we have this hiatus, I'm just trying to see. Anything we could do to, with this pause, to help homeowners get ready for what's coming, and it sounds like no.
Well, you know, I mean. At, w- we talked about this at our last update, um, it, it's a bit of a catch twenty-two. Um, because in order to replace those valves, uh, we need to shut the water off at the curb. Um, which isn't really what we want to be doing on a widespread basis in January and February, which kind of puts us right back where we are. Um, so. You know, I mean, if people are looking to do any plumbing work, I would certainly encourage them while they have a plumber at the home. To, to replace those valves, and that's something that we've talked about a little and, and may continue to talk about with you. Um, would, you know, one possibility is that, um, at some point in the future. We make it a requirement that if someone pulls a plumbing permit, they have a plumber at the house and they're doing work, they're required to change those valves. Um, you know, that, that's something that we can certainly talk about, I don't know that that's gonna help us, um, right this second. But it'll help the next person who has to do a meter replacement, certainly.
I appreciate the question, um, I think we're getting, I wanna stay focused on. I, I guess what I would say, I, I like the idea of taking the hiatus, and so if trustees have suggestions or questions or. Um, areas that they'd like improved in the program, this would definitely be the time to send an email to Leanne to consider. Uh, trustee Warren?
I'll try to make this brief, because I don't wanna, wanna, uh, I, I really feel more agenda topics, but maybe I missed this, but is there any flex? In, uh, I'm wondering about the flexibility in Vanguard's, um, COVID protocols, I'm just worried, I'm worried that. I, I, I'd like to think we'd be over, um, the Omicron variant by March. But with this pandemic, I've learned to never say never and not try to guess what's gonna happen next. But I would suspect if we are not over the variant, um, and, and these cases continue to explode, we're gonna have a lot. The, the small, a small number is going to turn to a very big number very quickly. Um, of people who say, you know, I, I will not allow someone to vaccinate in my home, uh, which is completely understandable, uh, in my opinion, so. Do we have any kind of backup plan for if all of a sudden, you know, we have many more people than we thought, uh, what the village has to do to perform the installation?
Um, I have some. We, we've talked through some scenarios, I don't have a specific backup plan. Um, and I think what we talked about previously is, um, currently if someone contacts utility or contacts Vanguard. Um, and it makes that request or proclamation, um, we move them into a status called return to utility. Um, at the end of the program, or at the end of Vanguard's contract. Um, my intent is then to review the number of return to utility status for COVID reasons. Um, and then, did, you know, determine whether or not our staff is capable, our, our immunized staff is capable of addressing those. Um, if we are, it's something we'll just do, um, current, i- if, if the percentages play out. Um, if, if where we are right now, you know, we just sort of double that. Um, that, that, that's something that could, I think, be taken on by our staff. Um, if, as you mentioned, that number explodes, um, that is definitely a conversation that we're gonna have to have at the end of this contract. And, and at that point, I will certainly give you at least two options, um, you know, for how, how we address that, but. Um, at this point, I, I don't have a specific course of action, except to say it's something that we're very closely monitoring.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see other, any other hands of trustees, are there any other questions or comments at this time? All right, well, thank you, Leanne, for the update, um, have a good holiday break and we will see you next year.
I think you get me on the next one.
Oh yeah, that's right, too soon. Um, nine C, consider tra- transfer station operations agreement with Whitefish Bay. Um, so this is coming to us and staff is asking for direction, um, one of three options at the end. Um, I believe this was handled in committee, um, addressed in committee last two weeks ago.
Um, that is, that is correct, yep, that is correct, thank you. Um, the three options though are not. Um, we did not discuss the three options specifically in committee. Um, those really have been drafted, uh, in response to Whitefish Bay's, um, comment and communication. Um, regarding the proposed, um, draft updated agreement. Um, but those. Um, just in, in a nutshell, um, staff had redrafted the agreement to. Incorporate the idea of a, um, percentage cost share. Uh, currently, the Village of Whitefish Bay contributes fifty-five percent of the materials to the transfer station. Village of Shorewood forty-five, and that's based on a rolling five-year average. Um, the, the current agreement is fifty-fifty, um, we're proposing, and this is based on consultant recommendation. Um, that agreement be revised to a fifty-five, forty-five cost share. Um, and that share would, would or could vary based on that rolling five-year average as we progress through time. Um, so, uh, Whitefish Bay, um, in, in part commented that they did not incorporate that. Into planning for their twenty-twenty-two operations budget. So, um, staff has outlined, um, three possible alternatives. One is that, um, we asked the Village of Whitefish Bay to then plan for incorporating into their. Twenty-twenty-three budget. Um, the second would be that we asked them to assume that cost share now, um, simply through a. Letter of addendum to the current agreement, um, and the third would be, um, really to do nothing. And just negotiate that percentage share, um, be in, incorporated into the next agreement. Um, which would begin in January of twenty-twenty-six, presuming, um, that we continue to share the transfer station at that point.
Thank you. So to recap, um, this, the current agreement that we have expires in twenty-twenty-five. And so if we ask them to make a change now, it could. Um, possibly be handled through a letter of addendum to the current agreement. Or the board might wish to renegotiate the whole thing and then start it over, you know. Basically start another ten-year agreement early. And, but it sounds like twenty-twenty-two is, the soonest that we would, um, start recapping. Um, recovering costs would be twenty-twenty-three. So at this time, um, I'd like to, staff is asking for direction at this time. Um, questions or, um, indication of your preference, trustee Earthing?
Uh, thanks for doing that, Leanne. Um, I, you know, I guess my gut is to, um, to have them incorporate this into twenty-twenty-three. That's where I would, that's, that's where I would lean personally. You know, did you get any impression as to where they, they were, you know, maybe with that idea? Do we have any, I, like, are they receptive to this? Is this something that we're gonna have to, that, that may be a bit of a fight? Any, any, any inclination?
My understanding is that options were not discussed with Whitefish Bay, that you wanted to get direction from us first. Leanne, is that accurate?
Um, I have, I have been. Discussing this with my counterpart in Whitefish Bay, you know, over the course of all of these discussions. Um, Rebecca has also had discussion with her counterpart in Whitefish Bay. Um, I will say that I didn't explicitly get a yea or a nay, but I would not have expected to, because. You know, that, that's clearly a, a, an elected official's policymaker decision, um, that wouldn't come at, at my level. Or my counterpart's level, so, um. It really, the comment that I received was that, you know, this, um, you know. You're waiting for a formal request, and then there was also the comment that, um, they hadn't planned for this in the twenty-twenty-two budget. And that window really has closed.
Yep, so I guess with, just hearing that, I, I think, you know, this is kind of a. This is kind of one of those things that I think we just need to do as soon as possible, so I would be in favor of, of drafting a letter and, and, um, trying to implement this. Uh, for twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, trustee Warren and trustee Baldock?
Well, I think you might be before me, based on, I think you might have raised your hand before me.
Okay, thanks. Um, my question is, um, for, uh, Leanne, what is our staff's preference on this? I mean, I think what Arthur said seemed like it makes sense, but does our staff have a preference on how we address this?
Um, I will say that I. I think it's a fair point that they make regarding the budget. I, I think it's, it's, it's reasonable and rational to, to ask or to make that request for a letter of addendum. Um, to the agreement for twenty-twenty-three, and, and through the end of the current operating agreement, um. I mean, that, that seems like a rational way to move forward and, um, yeah, I, I guess I would. If I were to express a preference, I guess that probably would be it.
Trustee Warren?
I'm gonna be brief, I don't wanna be too reductive here, but, you know, I'm looking at the three options when I was reading through the packet, it really kind of identified process of elimination, really. You know, the, the addendum now, um, I don't think works, because Whitefish Bay simply looks like it won't agree to it and we can't, you know, literally amend the contract. Uh, I do not wanna wait until twenty-twenty-six, so, um, I think echoing what others have said on the call, I think option one is probably the best option. Um, to ask them, you know, since they've already gone through their budget process this year, delay it for a year and try to incorporate. Um, this into the twenty-twenty-three budget process, so I think that leaves us, that leaves me in support of option one.
Thank you. Trustee Salkbrand?
Um, I would agree, it looks like we're the ones that wanna come and break the contract to get a better, uh, deal for ourselves. Which seems like, uh, it'd be interesting to know how we ever came to an agreement in, in the past, but anyway. It's, uh, history, so, yeah, I guess all we can do is request it for twenty-twenty-three and see if they'll go along with it. I mean, I, I guess I would hope this could lay the groundwork for a lot of possible future collaboration on DPW. Services that we could work together and collaborate and save money.
Thank you. I am in support of number one also, um, trustee Arndorfer and trustee Bachhorst.
Agree.
Thank you.
I, I as well believe that option one would be the most, uh, probably the most beneficial to all.
So I believe that is your direction, um, trustee Salkbrand, did you have something to? So I believe that is your direction. Um, trustee Stockbrand, did you have something to add or a different question?
No, sorry.
Oh, okay. Great, Leanne, does that give you enough direction?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Oh, do you need an official motion? It, it is, it's agenda for consideration, so I think we need a motion. Is there a motion to, um, direct staff to, uh, proceed with option number one?
I can make a motion. Uh, so, uh, let's see, request that village staff, I moved to request that village staff of Whitefish Bay plan to, for incorporation of. Percentage cost share in its twenty-twenty-three budget through a modified agreement.
Okay, motion by trustee Earthsink, seconded by trustee Warren. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, um, say aye. Show of hands.
Aye.
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 Um, any opposed? Okay, that was a unanimous vote, seven-zero for, um, that motion. All right. I think now we're concluded with that. Great. Um, number nine B, or item nine. B, no, no, nine D. Consider Policy Thirty-two Hybrid Meeting and Recording. Is this, uh, oh, hi Rebecca.
Hi, can you hear me? Because my, my video, I keep flashing an unstable connection, so. Okay, some of you have been freezing, which is why. Wonderful. Well, um, as we discussed at our meeting on December sixth. The board provided guidance relative to the policy for hybrid meetings. We're looking to, we're looking forward to implementing with all of you in the new year in twenty-twenty-two. So I, I don't want to belabor the same discussion, um, because we had gone through the points in a greater level of detail on December sixth. But located within your. Packet is a quality that reflects the talking, and so we're here to answer any questions that you may have. And then receive some action from you this evening.
Yeah, so just to recap, you were a little laggy there with the audio, but, um, basically what's in front of us is what we asked you to draft. Last time, so there probably shouldn't be a whole lot of discussion. But I see two hands, trustee Stockbrand and trustee Baldock. I don't know who was first. Trustee Baldock?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Uh, my question is just, you know, kind of around the timeline on this because. You know, with. The new variant and probably the next new variant we don't know about. It just seems like, it just seems like we're a couple months away from thinking about going back in person. Even if it isn't a hybrid capacity. So I guess that's just kind of my first point is. You know, do we want to just table this for now? Because I would just hate to have this conversation and have staff put all this. Additional work to just have it keep changing and changing. Like, if we're not going to be ready to do this for another few months. And I can't imagine that we will be from a public safety standpoint. I just wonder if like. If this is the conversation we need to have right now, or if this is a conversation we can hold on because. I think a couple months ago, before Omicron, people were maybe a little more cautiously optimistic about things getting back to normal. And I think now that's looking like that was, um, you know. Optimism and just optimism.
That's a good point. Um, I believe that the, um, policy does not specify a date. It's simply talking about what the guidelines for conducting meetings would be when and if that happens. And we, we talked about, so if that, let me put it this way, um, for ease, if there is a motion. To defer, let me ask manager Ewald. Manager Ewald, is there, do you require action tonight on this item?
If you don't require action tonight, we're hoping to lay the groundwork for what it would look like. To give everyone a level of what to anticipate and set expectations when we get to hybrid meeting form. So by all means, approval of, in any motion, if you were to desire to pass the policy. You could, um, subject it to the village board, making a final decision at a later date. In terms of when they would begin meeting in person. In the hybrid format. And, and that would also then a-apply to the other groups associated such as. The Police Commission, the Plan Commission, and the CDA. Who would have that hybrid format available as well after the board, um, has utilized it for a period of time to work out the kinks.
So seeing that the policy before us was drafted based on our input, um, at the previous meeting. But point, and does not specify a date to return to in-person meetings or a hybrid format. But point taken that, uh, we still are a few months away from this. I would take a motion to defer the item, or I would take a motion to, uh, approve the item. Trustee Baldock.
Um, I just wanted to say, I mean, I'm definitely. You know, comfortable with this as like the starting point here, and I think this, I think this looks right if we are pursuing hybrid meetings. So I certainly don't want to make it harder than on staff if we punt this. So, you know, just if the. If the best way for staff to move forward is for us to. Approve this tonight and get it, get it ready for if and when we need it, then I'd be ready to make that motion.
I will take any motion you'd like to make.
Go for it.
All right, let me. Find this here in the agenda.
I just saw Rebecca raise her hand there. Rebecca, sorry.
Yeah, while you're, while you're going to write the motion, there's, um, just one item that I want to be on the same page with the board about. Because we have had volunteer committees, um, requesting in person. And our advisement to, um, everyone has been that we're not going to go back in person until the board. First would, would trigger that, that going back to meet in person. Um, so, and that's the standard that we talked about at the very beginning because, um, it can get confusing for people. It can also get confusing for people to, to list things correctly and agendas, you know, and, and move forward. So I, I would just also ask for, um, the board to either reiterate that direction or change direction. Based upon how this conversation is going tonight. I think that there's definitely concern on the village board's behalf about. Meeting together in spaces. And so I just want to clear, so we're all on the same page as well. So that you can also communicate with other people on committees.
That makes sense. Uh, well, I found the motion. We're ready for it, although I see Kathy's hand up.
Uh, I guess my question is, so let's say the village board says we want to go back. In-person hybrid on March seventh for our first March meeting. Then the current plan would be we're gonna wait and do that for a while, be, and then the committees would start to meet in person after that. So for the residents who want to meet in person as committees, we're saying it could be April or May. That seems. It seems long.
Clarification, for volunteer committees, they would, once you go back to start meeting in a hybrid format, they would have an availability. To meet in person, but if you recall, volunteer committees, um, will not have the hybrid capability. So once they go to meet in person, they will meet in person and will no longer meet Zoom. Um, the hybrid format, um, based upon the policy. Um, will apply. To village board and, and only, um, will be. It's gonna first be tried with that technology and how we're using it with, uh, the CDA, Plan Commission, um, Police Commission. And I think those are the three.
So when could, let's say, parks and open spaces meet in person? Anytime they want?
Um, no.
No.
It would be after the village board, um, goes back to, into a hybrid format.
And so at this point, for people in that committee who, if someone has said to me, wow, I can't wait until we can meet in person again. I would say to them, we have no current plans to go in person.
Right, that decision is separate from this policy. So the policy is how it will work when the board determines that we go back in person. Two separate issues.
I just, I get the feeling from residents that they're looking for something. More. Um, and I understand the concerns. Um, I don't know what else to.
Yeah, I think at this point, we're not agenda to have that discussion. I mean, the, really what it is, is we can approve this policy this evening. Um, and then we can put on a future agenda to talk about when we might, what kind of guidelines or criteria we need to go back in person. I'd like to agenda that separately. So would anybody like to make a motion? But, um, your point is, is heard. Trustee Stockbrand, and I, I do believe that there are volunteer committees that would like to meet in, in person and that are struggling. With, um, the, the current situation.
Uh, I can make the motion. I've got it in front of me now. Uh, I move to approve the amendments made to policy number thirty-two related to conducting hybrid and video recording public meetings.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Baldock, um, seconded by trustee Bachhorst. Any further discussion? So I think the one item that I heard is to, um, maybe I'll do it for, future item of consideration. All right, um, all those in favor, um, say aye. Show of hands. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, motion carries seven-zero. Does that take care of everything for you, Rebecca, or was there something else you need direction on? Okay, great. All right, now I'm gonna move my cat, who's sitting on the agenda, but we are moving on to nine. E, consider next steps for the EDI Planning Environmental Scan. Manager Ewald.
Thank you. Just gonna pull this up in, in front of me. We have made significant efforts, um, to incorporate EDI components into our work that we're doing here at the village. And so attached to this memo, I just wanted to give some positive reflection to all that this, this board and prior boards. Have accomplished in this area. It was really, you know, to come up with seven to eight pages of, of this information is really a testament to the priority. That this board has placed in this work. And so I just want to thank you first, um, by reflecting on that. Because it's, um, it's done by true leadership of this group. Um, moving forward, we, we had budgeted for funds within the twenty-twenty-two. Document to create a strategic plan for the organization reflecting on EDI. And after, to some of our partners and members in the organization, which provides of employee and, and boards and committees. It's been recommended that the village prepare for a strategic planning process with an intermediate step of an environmental scan. So that leads to the question of what's an environmental scan? Um, it's essentially a process of gathering information about events. And their relationship within an organization's internal and external environment. The purpose is to help management and leadership determine the future direction of the organization. Um, scanning helps to identify threats and opportunities, um, to help avoid, avoid unpleasant surprises. And create a more effective planning in both the long and the short term. Um, in, in this instance, a scan will assist in determining the future direction of our organization. With respect to EDI initiatives, um, according to four components, uh, that were recently adapted. In the Equity Framework and Resolution that we did this past fall. Within your memo, there were some documents that were also hyperlinked, um, to, to kind of give you some understanding and. And reflection on what would be incorporated within that scan. It really allows us to move the documentation of what we've done in the past. And our current future initiatives that have been voiced, such as the welcoming ordinance, um, to have us gain some more understanding. Of those initiatives and their potential impact on the time and resources within our organization. Um, it also creates, um, an opportunity to differentiate really between our threats and our strengths. Um, because what constitutes for, um, an opportunity for one organization may actively threaten another. Um, and I know that that may sound odd, but in many times when we talk about EDI, you know, I reflect on the point that. We often recognize, um, and look to much larger organizations, um, like the city of Milwaukee or Milwaukee County. Who have great, great perspective on what to accomplish. But because of the magnitude of their organizations, maybe going about it in different ways that may not necessarily apply or be conducive in an environment. Like Shorewood, um, which is a smaller organization. So this would, the environmental scan would really be a foundation and a learning resource. So that we could appropriately balance and move forward, um, with a future strategic plan. Taking into account, um, our organizational size, capacity, and then our, our threats. As well as our strengths, um, so that we can do something that makes sense for the Village of Shorewood. If the village board agrees, uh, staff's gonna proceed with developing an RFP for an environmental scan. Um, that would create, um, a more inclusive organization for, um, the village proper, but then also the community. And then that RFP would come back to you for further review and consideration at a future meeting. So with that, I'm gonna pause and allow questions and discussions.
Yeah, so, um, let's see, you are asking for, okay, so this is up for consideration. To give staff to, uh, draft an RFP, so that, just staying focused on that, that's the item. Or that's the, uh, what we were being asked to consider this evening. Um, with that in mind, are there questions, um, or, um, comments that, um, trustees would like to make? In preparation for taking this action. Trustee Earthsink.
You know, with all the focus that we've, we've put into this in the past year, year and a half, I, I think this is a, a, a natural progression. I think this is, this is a very smart move and I am fully supportive and, um, can go ahead and make a motion if, if necessary.
Please do.
Uh, so I move to approve proceeding with an RFP for an environmental scan.
Okay, motion by trustee Earthsink, seconded by trustee Warren. Any discussion at this time? Uh, trustee Stockbrand.
Thank you. So is this, can you hear me? Is this something that, just to kind of get my head around. As opposed to the five-year strategic plan, is this something that. Like the same kinds of groups that you'd go for, for the five-year strategic planner, for vendors, are we looking kind of at the same group? Is it something that would be done in six months? Is it most likely less than fifty thousand dollars? Just give me something to kind of put my head around it.
So one of the reasons why we'd like to develop an RFP to put out there on this is to get that balance, but we're not sure what the estimated cost would be. It's very possible when we come back to you with an RFP, we may also ask them to quote, um, a future strategic plan. Um, that could build upon what an environmental scan may provide us so that we have an estimate to consider, not take action on, but consider. Um, from a timing perspective, but also use those numbers to also forecast what that cost, what it would be forecasted to be. Either this year or in a future budget. Um, the environmental scan is really the, they're the same steps in the prep work that we would need to do. Moving into strategic planning. Um, and it. While it seems, um, at times, we know, when I was first reviewing this information, at times I was like, gosh, this maybe sounds like we're doing something redundant. But as we move through this year, the importance of making.
Rebecca? Rebecca, could you go off camera? Your video, your audio is frozen.
Or not only what we've done now. Or not only what we've done now, but strategically in terms of, it really has an opportunity to leave. Yep.
I have enough, enough from that, thank you. It's buffering, it's sounding like it's buffering.
You speak buffering, you're bilingual.
I'm not sure where, in essence, I think that, in the framework for how to mold, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Oh, you can, okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm not sure where I left off. But essentially, an environmental scan, getting the looks for in the future will allow us to better prepare with those numbers. So we don't have quotes to provide you tonight, trustee Starkbrand, in terms of what that cost would be. But we're, we're looking forward to gathering that information so that we could be strategic with our dollars as we move forward.
And so hopefully it would be fifty thousand or less, because that's what's in the budget, right?
Yeah, at least, right, exactly. Okay, any other discussion or questions to take action? All right, I support this as well, so seeing none, all those in favor, why don't we take a roll call vote, just to be clear?
I'm gonna stay off camera.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backwurst.
Yes.
Trustee Earthing.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yeah.
Motion carries seven zero.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that I, I see that the time is nine forty, we have a few more items, I think we can get through them hopefully quickly. But if we can't, we can certainly, I'll take a motion to adjourn for the evening. Nine F, I won't take a lot of time with this update and receive feedback on the by-board agenda items. Included in your packet are the minutes from those meetings. Basically, the main, we have, we kind of set some goals for things to work on together in the new year around equity, diversity, and inclusion, but also building off the, the desire to increase public education around budgets and finance for both entities, given that it's the same tax bill. So the first step in that is, the school did, did develop their own tax bill insert. And that was an accomplishment, and they appreciated that collaboration. And our staff was really helpful in giving them the timelines to work within. We thought that there was expressed interest among the group around hosting a, co-hosting a meeting in the spring, to talk just generally about sort of like the future of our organizations in terms of finance and budgeting. The goal would be to continue to build relationships and just to open up that, that public discussion of, you know, sharing with the public, kind of, what we think is ahead for both organizations. So just wanted to get some feedback and thoughts from the board members, if you have them at this time. If you don't, you could submit them, and we can fold them in. I think the by-board will most likely meet in February. Kind of to be determined. And I would also ask trustee Orndorfer to chime in at this point, if there's anything that you would like to add to the update.
No, I think you covered it as well as the attachment in the, in the briefing document. I think it was really good conversation. I, I do think it would be a great opportunity. I think budget education would be a great opportunity for us and the village, the community as a whole. Just to get a better understanding of how, better understanding of visibility, how they work together. And, you know, what are some, what's the same, what's different, what are some of the, you know, extenuating circumstances that the school board deals with that really are not part of our process or world? So, yeah, I, I, I think I'm optimistic about the trajectory of this collaboration. Thank you.
The other item that you'll note in the minutes is starting a discussion around land acknowledge, native land acknowledgement practice. And we're really just in the information gathering stage at this point, and so we'll come back in the future with that. Trustee Stokbrand.
Oh, I was just wondering if there was any talk about enrollment at the district and where we stand with state aid and enrollment and how those two dovetail.
That would be part of the, that's what, what would be part of the agenda discussion in a public meeting.
Good.
I'll take that as a suggestion, that you'd like to hear about that. Any other comments or suggestions at this time? All right, I'm gonna take that as support. And I'll close this item and move on to nine G, consider ordinance thirty thirty-six and ordinance amending section sixty-eight dash nineteen contained within chapter sixty-eight, finance and taxation. As you'll recall, at the end of our, the night that we adopted the budget, anything that gets added to the tax bill is, you know, leads to a ton of individual motions, but I think trustee Earthing made all of them. This would make a change and allow us to do it in one motion, thereby shortening the, that evening for us, one night a year. Trustee Earthing?
I'd be happy to make this motion.
Go for it.
All right, so I move to approve ordinance thirty thirty-six and ordinance amending section sixty-eight dash nineteen contained within chapter sixty-eight, finance and taxation.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Earthing, seconded by trustee Orndorfer. Any discussion? I think this is brilliant. All right, this will be a roll call vote. Oh, trustee Stokbrand?
Um, I just had a question, will it list in the, in the motion every year that we pass, or, you know, and we approve it? It'll list everything that we're approving, so that like, for example, if for some reason, some year we decide to take sidewalks and put it on, we would, we could add that. It's just all gonna be done in one motion, right?
Like the consent agenda, I would assume.
Yep, absolutely.
The information will be there as part of the document. Okay, thank you.
Grass clipping, snow removal, you bet, you ma, you name it, it'll all be there. Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backwurst.
Yes.
Trustee Earthing.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yes. All right, motion carries seven zero, thank you very much. Okay, last item of new business, nine H, consider resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, a resolution moving central count processing for wards one through twelve to the Shorewood High School, seventeen oh one, East Capitol Drive in Shorewood for the two thousand twenty-two election year. So this is something that we've done in the past, and the high school has the space to do all this counting at once with the other wards that we have set up. Is there, are there any questions at this time? I'll try to hide my excitement that there are no questions, and would anyone like to make a motion? Trustee Orndorfer.
I hate to say it, but I did have a quick question. I mean, I'm assuming like they, they, they go at the, this process starts when there are no students in the building and that sort of thing, or I guess any line of sight to that.
This would occur on election day.
Right.
And, and central count is the, the counting of the absentee ballots.
Okay.
So if school was in session, people would be there on that day, but the, the public is not going there to, to cast their vote that day.
Okay. Yeah, I got that, but I just wanted to give a sense of how that might work. Okay, thank you.
I don't want to discourage any other questions. All right, seeing none, is there a motion?
Trustee Backwurst.
I move to consider resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, a resolution moving central count processing for wards one to twelve to the Shorewood High School at seventeen oh three, East Capitol Shorewood for the two thousand twenty-two election year.
I'll second.
All right, motion by trustee Backwurst, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. You want me to call the roll?
Go for it.
Do Warren.
Trustee Warren.
Trustee Warren.
Oh, he's got it, okay.
Terrible answer.
Trustee Backwurst.
Yes.
Trustee Earthing.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
President McCag.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to item ten, report to village officials. I have two items, the ICC meeting and the NSF North Shore Fire Department Board meeting. Both materials are linked in the packet, pretty self-explanatory, I don't have anything to add. Ten B, village trustee reports. Trustee Earthing.
I will make it super quick, but the bid has, has hired a new executive director. Her name is Janet Ricon, and she had been helping, she'd been helping out with our marketing and social media probably since, I think since the feast. So she was a candidate that was under serious consideration when we hired Steph Salvia. So I'm happy to see that she has returned, and, and now she is a, and actually a, an employee. So we are very excited to have her on board, she's gonna do great.
Congratulations. Other trustee reports. Oh, Kathy Stokbrand.
Uh, thank you. I would like to acknowledge a gift from Scott and Kathy Yanoff. For, they donated money for a bench at Triangle Park. And I'm grateful for their generosity, and I would also like to note that there are still two concrete pads that need benches. So something for other people to think about, thank you.
Exciting, how, what's the price point on one of those, Kathy?
Uh, just under three thousand, I'm told.
Oh, it's tempting. That's my, that's my, it's like my, my, my hood, it's right across the street. I have to look into that.
Trustee Backwurst.
Thank you. It is jubilation, I mean, great remorse that I must announce that I will be seeking a fourth term. So as the longest standing board member, Arthur, I look forward to passing that on to, actually, Anne, you're actually the second longest standing board member here, but it's been wonderful serving with all of you. And I look forward to moving on to less rewarding, but more interesting areas of my life. So thank you.
We still have you for a couple of months.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Backwurst.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other reports? All right, seeing none, village manager, ten C, two thousand twenty-two work plans.
So included in your packet is an outline of the, the two thousand twenty-two work plans that have started. We're continuing to, to work on them as we lean into the first three months of the year. Because we recognize that as we turn the page to next year, we want to accommodate for any transitions. It, it will be upfront and saying that I think some of the items particularly listed to the village manager's office are, we endeavor to, we endeavor to achieve them. However, we're gonna try to accomplish them one at a time, so we can stage ourselves and be realistic with our accomplishments and to make sure that they get done well as we move forward in two thousand twenty-two. If you can hear me, and this is coming across clearly, I am welcome to take questions.
We hear you.
Okay, good, because many of you are frozen on my end.
So, oh, so it is put under here for considered, is there a motion that you're asking for this evening?
If there's any discussion primarily to, to get the board informed in terms of what our outlook is going to be, and if there were any things that needed to shift dramatically that could be accommodated for within the schedules that are laid out.
Is that something that we could, so you want us to discuss that as a group rather than? Yeah, okay, and then you want a, a motion to adopt these?
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Stokbrand.
So you're asking for approval tonight of the work plan? I'll be honest with you, I had trouble looking at it. It's, it's really hard to navigate, and I've got a pretty good sized computer monitor. I'm not sure, I'm, how, how does our trustee prioritization fit into this? I think it's difficult for me, you know, I mean, I would like to know too, you know, obviously with the things going on with the new village clerk, that's gonna affect what you can do, and so I feel like I can't really, like I kind of need to know before I would set a priority what you think you can do at village hall right now, given the training going on for the elections and everything else.
And I can appreciate how those documents can be large and overwhelming. I think that's also in, in retrospect, it's, it's also a visual that I, I like to provide and give to you so that you understand the breadth of what we're trying to accomplish. And I'd be happy to come back to you and share pointedly with you what I believe that we can proceed with and starting in first quarter, as we enter into the two thousand twenty-two year. So I'd, I'd welcome the opportunity to do that trustee Stokbrand for the whole board, so to ensure that that's clear as we moved into two thousand twenty-two, but at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of great content there, it was just challenging to see. But then again, the trustee prioritization will come before the long-range financial plan, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that if we're gonna really have a discussion about this, we should probably agenda it and then have some different, kind of break out the different sections and things like that. And, and talk about how it relates to trustee prioritization. And it's also, I'm aware that it's ten o'clock at night too, and we might not be our best. And it's also, I'm aware that it's ten o'clock at night, too, and we might not be our best uh, and critical thinkers. Everyone's looking frozen.
I think we're all just staring at the screen.
Staring at the screen.
So do you want to defer, or I, I guess I'm not sure.
Yes, please.
Uh, I'll move to defer the twenty twenty two work plan offered by staff to allow for further time for reflection.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, so motion by trustee Stokbrand seconded by trustee Earthing to defer um, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, show of hands or voice. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, that uh, motion is deferred, or I mean, item is deferred to a future meeting. Thank you, Rebecca. Sorry, we didn't save more juice for you there. Um, all right, moving, I think we just have items of future consideration. Um, eleven A, consider amendments to charter ordinance, trustee Arndorfer. Um, so just to keep in mind this evening is that all we need to decide is he's looking for a vote to put it on a future agenda. We don't have to discuss the item. Um, trustee Arndorfer, do you like to present?
Yeah, I mean, I guess just if if we need any background here, I mean, just as everyone knows, at the October eighteenth meeting, uh, we took up a proposal that uh, to change the code as it applies to the appointment of uh, planned commission members. Um, this change essentially removed the board from the process and left it in the purview of the village president. Um, the impetus for this was a change in the legislature and just, I'm sorry, in the legislation wanted to make sure that the code aligned. Uh, as I'm sure you recall, there was some pretty vigorous debate um, on this and um you know, ultimately came down to a four three vote. Um, I was deciding vote on that. Um, I did share some of the concerns of the dissenting, some of the concerns and thoughts, the dissenting trustees. Um, but um, you know, based on the discussion, based on the materials and just everything I was hearing, I'd not see a legitimate or, you know, plausible alternative. So I, you know, just voted the way I did and, you know, I was not afraid of a Saturday night massacre or anything like that. So I did so with a clean conscience, but I think if possible, wanted to try to, you know, find a way to reinstate the role of the board in um, deciding on planned commissioners. I do, you know, based on subsequent discussion, I think a charter ordinance would be a way to do that. Um, I think there's some compelling arguments that have been raised in its favor. Uh, there's uh, you know, we have precedent of another community that uh, did just that. And um, you know, there's also precedent of, you know, the village implementing a charter ordinance uh, to modify uh, the code. Um, even, you know, when the guiding statutory language uses the word shall. Um, based on all that, uh, I guess if I was going to submit an item for a future consideration, it would be along the lines of uh, directing staff to explore the drafting of a charter ordinance that would re in, I'm sorry, reinstate the requirement that the president's planned commission appointments be subjected to board approval.
Second.
Great. So we have a motion by trustee Arndorfer, seconded by trustee Stokbrand. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, wait, I see.
Trustee Warren?
Sorry, maybe I have a question for Rebecca. I'm just wondering kind of what kind of, what kind of work, what kind of prioritization would this be given um, in terms of kind of fitting into our work plan? A level of work would it take, just kind of generally, I know, and it's not scheduled for discussion, but.
If you'd like, I can tell you how the, how the process works to pass one of those. Um, so if there's, there are a few different things when you're, when you're talking about a charter ordinance. First of all, it has to be passed by a two thirds vote of the board. And then after that, you have to publish it as a class one notice under chapter nine eighty five. And then it doesn't take effect for sixty days until after passage. And the reason for the waiting period is during that sixty day window, a petition can be brought by citizens and in in the village to ask for it to be placed uh, on a referendum. Um, and and I'll just, I'll read you this exact stack of statutory language that they use, because it's a little confusing. It says that the petition can be brought by electors of the village equal to not less than seven percent of the votes cast for governor at the last general election, asking that the charter ordinance be submitted to the full referendum for the full, full village. And then, and then you have to have a referendum at the next um uh, election and it would approve or not be approved based upon majority vote. If no referendum is put forth, then it becomes law sixty days after it's published. So that's, there's also another, there's a couple of other ways that a charter ordinance can be passed, but if it's board consideration, it's basically the two thirds. Then publication, then wait to sixty days and then see what happens. So that that's kind of the process.
All right, other questions related to taking action this evening? Okay. Um, oh, trustee Warren, did you want to know from manager Ewald, like prioritization of this, or did you get enough of your information?
No, yeah, maybe, maybe just if if uh, if if there's, if there's, I really like short comment on prioritization when it fits in. Or 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 would we fit into the prioritization board?
Yeah, my understanding is that it would, yeah, it would kind of go in line with what else we have going on. Um, Rebecca's having a lot of technical difficulties, so you want to?
I can probably figure, I can probably vote on it and figure, we can figure it out.
Okay, sounds good. Um, trustee Bachor?
Yeah, I guess I would ask trustee Arndorfer what, how big of a priority he feels this is, because maybe that would help the rest of us understand where this should fall. It's in the, in the line of items that we have in front of us.
Well, I mean, I I mean, as all, with all things, yeah, sooner rather than later would be great. I mean, I recognize there are other things that are priorities. I mean, at the same time, you know, we did turn around uh, this change in pretty quick, you know, pretty quick order. So I mean, I think we might have some flexibility in terms of how quickly we bring it up.
I guess I would ask for a clarification on what change, I mean, lining with the state statute and doing a housekeeping item or um?
Right.
I feel like there's a lot of misunderstanding around this. Um, the fact that we have, there is a state statute and a protocol that we cleaned up our, our local ordinance in order to be in alignment with. Whereas what you seem to be asking is for us to break away and cede from the state statute, which is fine. It's great to be um, renegade, and this doesn't affect any of us on here. Um, by the time this would take effect, it wouldn't impact um, anyone that the president has or would um, appoint, you know, going forward. Um, I, so I guess that um it's great to uh, be leaders and to say that, you know, we want to require that our president include more of our voices in her purview, you know, and be one of two municipalities in the state that does this. Um, and you know, of course, you know, the political implications of that as well, it might be that it's kind of antagonistic or whatnot. Or it's just democracy, which, you know, our president is elected at large, just like a mayor is elected at large. I don't want to equate the two. It's very different. We're a municipality, you know, we're not a city. But um in, and I appreciate these renegade thoughts because, you know, hey, sorry, the dogs. Um, in my first year on the board, we did some, some big things as well. So um, I I guess where I'm going is what kind of emphasis would you like this? I, it's very unlikely that this change will occur in the next year, given the bounty of things that have been on the list, on the priority list. But if this is something that you feel is paramount, would love to hear it. And maybe you can convince the rest of us that we should prioritize this. Um, so I guess that's where I'm going with that. Um, but I also, we had, did have a robust discussion. We have had lots of information and um I just uh in the spirit of being a cohesive team, whether it's now or in the next year or so, it's just good for all of us to understand what are, what are priorities and what are, what the impetus is behind this. So I heard in the, or I saw in the packet that this was based on a it doesn't matter. What kind of priority do you want to see this as?
I think I said that. I'd be happy to have further discussion around that, but again, I'm not gonna speak for what Rebecca needs to do.
Okay, because I will say that we have a lot of priorities and great, change it, don't change it. I'm only here for another couple of months. But um, I I do feel that there are a lot of things that have, that a lot of cans that have been kept. So anyway. Go ahead, president.
Just to be clear, just to be clear, the motion on the table does not can um stipulate a date or um you know, desire for a date of when this would appear on the agenda. So unless it's amended, it's just, all, all that we're looking for is a majority vote to put it on a future agenda. It's not indicating when.
Oh, I thought the motion was that staff would investigate and that would be using staff resources.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you reread? Let's read back the motion.
Uh, direct staff to explore drafting of a charter ordinance that would reinstate the requirement that the president's planned commission appointments be subject to board approval.
Oh, so you're just act, actually, the motion is just directing staff to explore. So it's not even you know, it's, it's the first step of finding out the feasibility. So um, trustee Stokbrand? Trustee Warren?
Well, I certainly didn't second the motion to hope that it would be put on a back burner. I would like to see this move forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that isn't anyone's intention.
Can you hear me at this point? Yes, this is.
Yes.
So at this point, given what we have on the table right now, I we're gonna need to request assistance from attorney bear in order to provide that direction. There, there are things that we need to be attending to, and it, I can appreciate where you want to move forward with this, but this is also when we're talking about priorities, we're talking, we have not finished what we we set out to do from the last year. So I just want to be cognizant of that, and and I would need assistance with that. And so that would be my request of the board. With their understanding that his assistance will be needed in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Okay, trustee Baldoff?
I think trustee Warren was next.
Yeah, he was.
I've been, if I may, I'd like to call on trustee Baldoff first because she hasn't spoken yet, and then I'm hoping that we're gonna come to some kind of conclusion to take action. But I will, I'll hear from everyone. I just wanted.
Okay, I'll be really quick. I was just gonna say, um, I, you know, I was one of the people who voted against this. Um, but I would not support moving forward with this right now. Um, we made the decision and given how many other, I think, really important things the village staff has to work on right now, I don't see this as being a, a high priority. I'm not saying that it couldn't become a future item, because maybe it could, and I would definitely entertain this in the future, but right now I think we have a lot of work to do. And to me, this is not something that rises to being one of our most important issues.
Trustee, thank you, trustee Warren?
I guess, for me, bottom line is like, I I I'm totally okay with discussing this and putting it on an agenda. I wouldn't prioritize, we have a lot of, as Rebecca said, we have a lot of things to do. So um, I wouldn't say it's something that is an urgent priority here. Um, because we we do have a lot of work in flight. I think the thing I would say is, you know, I don't know how far we can get into this discussion, because this is an item for future consideration. It feels like we're actually discussing the item at this point. Um, so just, I I don't know how much further, I want to kind of limit my comments, because I'm because I think we're gonna.
Yeah, don't discuss items. But this is really about um having it become an item for future consideration um, at this time. And I guess I would say that for either the people that either made the motion or seconded the motion, if you're if part of the motion is your expectation that it be a priority and that you have some expectation of when it would be brought back to the board, then you should amend it as such so that the board actually knows what we're voting for, because I don't think that there's agreement on that. Um, trustee Bachor, do you have something to add?
I do, and I have no problem this being an item for future consideration for discussion at the board level. But once we direct staff to expend staff resources, I would like there to be, then at that point, we have to realize that equates to money and missed opportunities for other things that staff is currently working on or planning to work on. So just like other motions that many have required here that we say to not to exceed X amount. If, as manager Ewald is saying, this will require attorney fees. And if memory serves, the, our attorney was the one that recommended that we make the amendment or that we um, change our ordinance. Um, this is almost a circular argument that is going to result in a lot of, well, it's going to result in taxpayer money being spent on the fact that some of us are not happy with the state law and the changes. So by all means, um, trustee Arndorfer bring us the, the information and stuff. But I would feel very uncomfortable spending more time and more staff resources and taking away from things that we're already doing to get, because we don't appreciate the current outcome or for whatever the reason is, given that this is not a prior, priority. And even the justification put forward in the um, in the packet itself was based on an email conversation and a couple of things, to me, do not equate to thousands and thousands of dollars and missed opportunities for advancement in this village. But again, item for future consideration at a committee level, by all means. So I would recommend, if if you want some priority on this, um, you know, adjust it as such, or just let it fall. Because by just the, the way the motion reads now, it'll go into the, the parking lot of, of big ideas where everything else does.
So I will, I mean, I'm gonna support it as a for, future item of consideration, because politically, you know, I also have I don't think that it should be um, taken ahead of other things that are compliance related or business related, related to, you know, our business cycle. I support it. Um, but also it looks terrible if I don't support it, right? So politically, like, I don't really have, it's very uncomfortable. Um, and so I'm gonna support it, because I want to, you know, support the process. Um, but I will say both trustee Arndorfer and trustee Stokbrand, if you're, if part of what you're asking is a certain timeframe, I would like just transparency wise to, for you to put that in the motion, so that we really know what we're, what we're voting for. Because I've heard concerns around resources and staff and timing. But if your intention is just that it's come before us at the next logical place in our business cycle, then I would like that clarification as well. So do you want to amend it at this time or leave it as it stands?
Trustee Stokbrand has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Trustee Stokbrand?
Uh, I'm comfortable leaving the uh, motion the way that trustee Arndorfer proposed it. And then we could um, put it in on the prioritization list and see where it falls um, with that.
Great, as, as long as that's your expectation, I think that's what, what my expectation was. So I just wanted to make sure that we were knowing what we're supporting.
Well, I would like to say faster, but given the conversation, I, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, and trustee Arndorfer, is that your expectation as well?
Correct.
Okay, great. So with that, um, I would like to take a vote at this time. So a vote yes is to support this item. Um, staff doing, let's reread the motion about one more time.
Uh, direct staff to explore drafting of a charter ordinance that would reinstate the requirement that the president's planned commission appointments be subject to board approval.
Okay, so all those in favor, show of hands, voice. Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, so seven zero in support of this becoming a future item for consideration. Rebecca, did you get that? Let me make sure. Well.
I did. Yeah, thank you, Jim, for repeating it, because I didn't hear it completely the first two times.
I was happy to.
Great. All right, thank you for hashing that out. I'm really glad that we distinguished between time expectations and just general support for the process and exploring. That was really a great conversation, so, and we didn't go off topic, or out of scope. So item 12, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Third.
Okay. I want to wish everybody a really happy and healthy new year, and just say that I'm really grateful for all the time that we spend together and appreciate everything that's, that we've accomplished this year, and look forward to more, and appreciate each one of you.
Thanks, Anne.
Now I'll take a vote.
Thanks, Anne.
Now I'll take them. All those in support of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion, village board is adjourned at 10:20 PM. Go to bed, everyone.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Bye.